Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
Welcome to the meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board, today's date being April 8th, 2025, and we are starting right on time at approximately 7:30. Madam Secretary, would you mind reading the announcements?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If you find my agenda. Okay. Number one, call the order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting or hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Central newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
Before, before we go to pledge of allegiance, just following the pledge of allegiance, I want to hold a moment of silence for the four U.S. personnel that we lost in Lithuania about two weeks ago during a training exercise. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right, rule call. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hans?
Here.
Madam even Lavender?
Present.
Mr. Labrario?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell is excused this evening. Ms. Ojens?
Here.
Mr. Hapalka is excused this evening. Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
Thank you very much. We're going to make a little bit of adjustment in the order this evening, so we can hear our application up first, assuming the applicant is ready. Fantastic. Exactly. We know time is of the essence here. This application is for listed a minor site plan carried from March 25th, 2025, for block 14602, lot 10, in the zone M-H area at 632 Myersville Road, application number 24-16P. And before we start, I'll turn to our ward attorney. Just please confirm notices are all in order.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, my pleasure. The, this matter was, the notice was deemed sufficient and timely, served and published for a prior hearing, at a prior hearing, and then was carried without further notice to this evening. So we do have sufficient notice, as I understand it from the prior meeting, being carried to this evening, timely served, so the board would have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening. And when we get to the appropriate point, I'll be happy to swear in all the witnesses, including our board professionals.
Great.
When we get there.
Fantastic. Good. We'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name is James Lasala, L.A.S.A., L.A. of Riverdale, the attorney for the applicant. With me is Luwan.
Luwan Jevikai.
Jevikai.
It's complicated.
I've only known him for 10 years. And matter of fact, his other location of the Black Bull Restaurant is roughly across the street from my office, so I can testify to the excellent food and.
You'll just have to do it as a proper.
Establishment. Yes. We also have Tyler Van de Valk here as the engineer, who has prepared the plans. It is essentially running a restaurant and bar just as much as the old place had been, but obviously in a much better way. The application essentially is to pave the existing gravel parking lot, put up a couple of signs, and dear to his heart, a large statue of a black bull. The statue is made of fiberglass, if I'm correct, so it is easily movable. He told me last night that a child could move it. I don't know if it's that light, but in any event, we believe that the application should be straightforward and hopefully pretty brief.
Great. Thank you.
I'd ask that Mr. Jevikai be sworn in.
Yes, certainly, and I'll swear in your other witness as well, as well as our two board professionals. If you'll all raise your right hand, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you all.
Please proceed.
All right, if I may call you Leo?
Yeah.
Sure. There we go. You're the owner and operator of the business?
Yes, I am.
Could you describe briefly what it is?
It's a established restaurant, so it's a customer service. We serve food and alcohol, and it's a high-end steakhouse.
And you actually opened under a CEO back in December, just before Christmas?
Correct.
And at this point, you're here simply to ask to be able to get the outdoor improvements that you're seeking, primarily the paving of the gravel parking lot?
Correct, yes.
And with regard to the letters that we received from the board engineer and the board planner, a couple of questions. There was a comment about trees, removal of trees. Could you talk to us about that?
We did not remove any big trees. What we did remove, there are dead, there were a few dead trees actually laying down, and then most of it was debris.
And was that also done in cooperation with the DEP?
Yeah, DEP was there afterwards. We did it first time, and then they came in, they looked over, we went over the detailing what we did. They, there was also some, a few trucks have dumped, was dumped their gravel, or dirt, I should say it, in a corner of the property. We talked about that. I leveled it up. DEP did not want to, so we removed it, that dirt at my expense, removed all the debris in the back of the, by the, by the side of the property. They did ask me to, if I'm willing to put some trees back there. I agreed with it, waiting for their, what kind of trees, because they said they're going to specify what kind of trees they're going to put there.
One of the comments made by the engineer specifically was, do you intend to continue to cooperate with the DEP?
Yes.
And that, that process is still ongoing, correct?
Correct, yes.
At this point, you're waiting for a response from them?
Yes, they, they should give me a list of trees, of what they would, what kind of trees they want back there. And also, they know that I will go slowly, because those trees they want, they are very expensive.
And with regard to the ownership, he indicated in comment 20, you want to confirm that you're.
I'm sorry, which report are you referring to?
Oh, this is the Van Cleef Engineering.
Engineer, and number 20 you're now referring to?
Yeah, checklist number 20, on page three.
Okay.
Just indicating that you are the sole proprietor of both the steakhouse and the property owner.
Yes, I am.
And you're seeking to put two signs on the property as well as the bull?
Correct.
And Mr. Van de Valk will be testifying in detail about this.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but when you say two signs and the bull, there's, am I correct, there's two wall signs, a ground sign, and a bull? That, that will be there?
There was, no, there's one wall sign. No, two wall signs, sorry, two roundish, two wall signs. There is a, one sign in the entrance in the beginning, and then is a bull.
Two on the building?
Two in the building. One is all in the beginning, outside in the property.
That's the ground sign.
The ground sign, and one, and then a bull.
Three, and a bull.
No, it's two signs and a bull. Two, as you're coming up, New Vernon towards the circle, and there's another one facing towards Myersville Road as you're coming towards the circle from Chatham.
Correct.
The two, and then you have a bull.
And I'm sorry for clarification, though. I thought I saw there was a sign setback deviation. I thought that was referring to a ground sign. Am I, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Times are only on the building.
So what is that sign setback deviation? If it's a zero setback, what is that?
Zero setback, rather than 10.
I'm sorry?
Rather than 10, permitted.
Right, so that indicates there's a ground sign, not.
There's a third sign. There's a third sign by the entrance on Myersville.
On Myersville, yes.
It's a square.
Correct, it's a square white.
Not a round sign.
Yeah, yeah. There's two rounds in a building.
Two walls, one ground.
And a bull.
One statue.
Yes, yes.
Two walls.
That's where I started. I guess that's where I'm finishing.
Two walls, one permitted, one variance.
Yep, yep, I'm with you.
One ground permitted, but at the wrong setback, setback variance, and then the statue.
Right. We're all saying the same thing in different ways.
And then I'm going to jump off to the conditions of approval number six, which is the old Myersville in approval. And they've listed a number of things here, and they're asking simply, are you able to continue with these conditions? Are you asking for certain exemptions or additions?
I mean, I read, I read the numbers there. I would probably ask if, am I ever allowed to hold a wedding party? Can I close the place down for an event, which is a huge event, not a, now individual, but let's say somebody wants a wedding party, wants 300 people, outside, inside. Can I or can I not?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation, maybe to help move things along? There's a list that Mr. Voish was kind enough to put together on pages six and seven, of his engineering memo, that I think are carried forward of at least many of the conditions of the prior 1995 approval. I take it you've decided which ones you can stipulate to continuing and which ones you're requesting to either be eliminated or modified? Would that be an accurate assumption?
That's basically an accurate assumption.
Okay, so maybe it's best to let the board know what it is you're looking for, and the board can ultimately decide.
For the sake of clarity, I'm going to walk it through one at a time.
Whatever works best.
Okay. The first one is the bar shall be limited to 20 seats in the bar area to 560. The square footage is actually about 600, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And you're looking to put 26 seats there, because you have 12 at the bar and three tables of four, is that right?
There's, there's four tables of four.
Four tables.
And there's 12 stools.
So a total of 26.
Correct.
So you're not looking for a dance floor there?
No.
But during a wedding, you'd be possibly having, you would likely be having an area cleared to dance, not specifically a dance floor necessarily, but if you have a wedding there in the future, that would be an option.
Correct. Not necessarily to be a dance floor or make a setup of a dance floor. It's necessary with what's your event or a private people will ask for it. They might want a clear area just to stand. Maybe they want to put a DJ, just kind of like hanging out and have a cocktail hour, so you have to remove those tables and have a clear room, not necessarily a dance floor like a dance floor.
But the ability to have dance, a dance floor if there's a private event, is that what you're asking for?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Could I ask a question? There's a second floor in that building, correct?
Yes, it is.
Are you using the second floor?
As a private event, like a birthday events, groups of the events, like any events that goes around. It's about 40.
Yeah, what's the size of that?
It's about 40 chairs in it.
So if you were to have a wedding, let's say, you could have it upstairs?
Correct.
Only a small one?
But a small one.
But it seats only 40?
Correct. So it's really limited to, let's say, a birthday event, 360, something, a communion, or something like that.
Next condition is the use, as a restaurant would be emphasized as opposed to a bar. I'm assuming you have no problem with that?
No problem.
Next is eat and services emphasized over takeout. I'm assuming you have no problem with that?
No problem with that.
Next is there to be no groups, DJs, bands, et cetera, on the property, except, I love this, Christmas, New Year's, and the seven days of Mardi Gras.
No Mardi Gras. I haven't been celebrating it properly.
I didn't know the.
Oh, yeah.
On other occasions, it'd be limited to background music, piano players, and the like. And other than the large exclusive groups like a wedding, you're okay with that?
Other than private event for the day of, no need to have any other large music other than regular music.
It also says no pool tables, video, pinball games, and the like. I'm assuming you're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
By the way, if I may for clarification, we have a couple here where you're making requests to keep certain things, or do certain things, excuse me, and then you're also asking to do them for private events. Has there been a contemplation as to, I guess it's conceivable they could be a private event 365 days a year? The.
Correct. But more is like, those private events may be once a year, or maybe once in five years.
Well, I guess I'm just maybe throwing out there for contemplation by people if there's going, if it was contemplated a limit of how many private events per year there would be, or is it simply you could have 365 per year?
No, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that would be, that won't be in my case, because I'm not a caring.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of putting that out for the board. I'm sure the board's thinking about it. They didn't need me to say it. And, but I just wanted to make sure applicant maybe has given it some consideration. Counselor maybe has given it some, and will address it at some point.
Sure. Indicates a total of 210 seats. Is that correct?
Correct.
Does that include second floor seats?
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry, that includes a second floor?
Yes, it does.
By the way, I take it you're requesting that the applicant, that changing the law regarding race trudicata in a private resolution, that that not continue to exist?
That's correct.
Thank you. Because if you didn't do it, I would have. All due respect to my predecessor in 1995, that may not have been, maybe it's best that it be extended, as the law said.
That would be, the next one I would suggest would be rescinded as well regarding signs, because we have a specific, the signs are a specific part of the application today. All exhausts are to be directed and be hidden from view. There's another condition like that. They are pre-existing. We're not doing anything to change it, so we would like to have those two things taken out. No wood burning grills is no problem, right?
No.
Only porch would be screened and porch, and no porch will be heated. Is that okay? Do you, do you plan on?
What do you mean heated? Meaning like heat lamps or heat?
No, I mean like putting in heating, like, like closing in a porch and making it a new boom, if, in effect.
No, no, that was used only for a summer purpose, outside. Maybe if it's literally late in the winter, or in the fall, I should say, or beginning of the spring, some nights are a little, maybe a little warm.
Affordable heating?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Not, not something that's hooked up to a furnace?
Correct, no, none of that stuff, no.
Truck deliveries will be at the rear?
Yes.
What about, perhaps we'll ask Mr.
I'm sorry, did you skip the HVAC?
I coupled that in with the all exhausts.
Oh, you're asking for that to be.
Also to be dropped, because they're existing. We're not doing anything about it.
Action. Okay. Are they already hidden from view?
Anybody notice?
I've heard they were hidden.
You can't really say, I didn't say.
I mean, you can see them if you're driving outside of the property, but if you're in a property sitting around, you can't, because they were, they are existing.
There's a roof fan on one of the roofs.
Correct, yeah.
On New Vernon roadside, right?
Correct, yeah.
I don't know the answer to this on wooden guardrails?
It's the, it's an existing wooden guardrail for the parking lot where the gravel is right now.
And that's going to stay?
That's going to stay, because it's better to stay instead of taking, it's wood, it's kind of like, it fits with the natural.
Stop signs at the exits is okay?
Both are there, yes. I put them both.
Police department is authorized to enforce handicap parking?
Yes.
And the other one is about signing, again, that's part of the application.
Yeah, there are three, three handicap parks.
And the planner's report on page three.
Before you do that, could I just ask a question on page two?
Pam, can we, can we just get through the applicant testimony? We'll have an opportunity for the board, if you could just hold on to your questions.
Just a discrepancy between occupants.
Okay, if it's a clarification, real quickly.
Uh, page two says 178 occupants. I think you said 210.
If you count the upstairs, that makes.
So in parking, you have to go by 210, not 178?
I can clarify. So my letter says 178. That's the maximum occupancy shown on the architectural plans, based on the amount of square footage. The 210 is from the prior resolution, indicating the maximum occupancy could be 210.
But we're hearing tonight that there could be 40 people upstairs in a party on the second floor. So maximum occupancy would be 210, no?
Area D is the dining. That's up to 50. The upstairs has up to, it says on the plan, up to 50.
It does say the plan, but it doesn't fit, because we.
Right. So it looks like by square footage of each of those areas cumulatively, the maximum occupancy is, is still going to be less than the 210 that was previously allowed in the approval, in 95 approval.
And we were going by the 210, just to say, if that's what it is.
Yeah, right. There's no reason to limit you any further down.
The 178, any architectural plans is what they really.
Right. Any architectural changes interior of the building would allow you the discretion of that 178 to the 210.
Okay, thank you.
Which, while we're on the subject, would include, the first stipulation was on the bar, the increase to 600 was requested to modify that. And then, per the plans, you're showing 14 bar stools and 16 for a total of 30.
Correct, but it doesn't fit.
That doesn't really fit. It's really more like 12, okay.
The plans show more.
All right, so that'll be at like 28 then?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the plans show more.
Plans show more, I made it less, because it just does not look, it looks too proud.
There's two on the corner that don't really belong there.
Yeah, but what's true?
True is the one I'm saying, because the plan, the architect asked for it, which is really you can.
Shouldn't the plan be true?
We can modify the plan.
We can modify, or we can add 14 shares. But again, I removed that.
I think just to go into plans, but we can come back to it later, but I think the plan should be, the plan should be true to what's there is.
We can have the architect modify the plans.
Maybe that can, if, in the event there's an approval, it could be a condition subsequent to the approval to match what's there. And then certainly the condition limiting them will govern.
Yeah.
Regardless, but this way it's about suspended.
I don't want to take, can I talk about, can we not close this point then?
Yeah, well, we might as well, we're into it now, so.
I'm not saying, I can bring it up later, if you want.
Yes, absolutely. Well, no, I think if you've got a quick point, I just want to make sure they get through their.
I think what he's saying is architecturally, it can fit this many. The way he has his restaurant, it's not going to fit that many.
That's correct.
So I don't think you should change your plans. If you decide to change chairs one day, you can fit more.
Or change your configuration.
Yeah, it would give you the 30.
So I, I don't think that.
So your point is show the maximum.
Yeah.
As opposed to.
It's, I don't know that it's inaccurate versus his operation right now.
Which is what I was trying to point out, Ms. Ojens, is the maximum that the architect has proposed, which is per other codes, is the 178, but that's still below the 210 that they could.
Yeah.
So future architectural improvements to the building could enhance the capacity inside the 95 approval.
That's well stated. Thank you for that point. That's a good point.
It's the second floor.
In any event, this is on page three of the planner's report. She's asking you to confirm, what are the total number of employees?
As right now, we have 22.
And maximum number of employees at maximum shift?
That would be a Saturday, 22.
I'm sorry, still 22?
A Saturday is the maximum.
Saturday, okay.
So Saturday, you have entire staff.
All hands on deck on Saturday.
That's number, that's number five on the planner's report?
Number five.
Okay, if we could add.
Certainly. Hours and days of operation?
Seven days a week, 11:30 to 10:00 PM. Monday, Monday to Friday, Thursday, Friday to 11:00 PM, Saturday to 11:00 PM. Sunday, 1 to 9.
Hours that the staff is on site?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Sunday is what?
1 to 9.
1 to 9. Got it. Thank you.
The hours that the staff is on site?
Staff comes in different staggers. It starts from 10:00 AM, and they come in as based on the business and operation or job description they have. The last person leaves one hour after we close, so if we close in at 10:00, the last person should be there by 11:00, or if we close in 11:00, the last person should be there by 12:00.
Hours and days of deliveries?
It's five days a week, and is from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Hours and days of trash?
Twice a week for trash, once for cardboard.
And containment of any food-related odors. Do you have dumpsters?
Dumpster, that's the trash. That's a dumpster that we do twice a week. It's picked up the trash, and once a week cardboard. I did it twice a week for the safety of environment and the trash, because I think it's a lot of vultures around here, so I kind of added one extra pickup.
Thank you.
And large rodents.
And large rodents.
Yeah. So I just said, we do twice a week, so that.
Now, you've been open since December.
December 22 or 23.
Have you had any problems with the trash with regard to odors, or vultures, or rodents, or anything else?
No, not, no. We will not have any.
That's all I have of.
Great, thank you. What I'd like to do is first start with any of the board professional questions, and then we'll turn it over to board members here for any questions, and then turn it to the public. So, yeah, did, did you want to have them testify, your architect or engineer?
It's the engineer, yes.
Okay. Do you want to incorporate that with the questions? Because it seems to me like it's probably going to go that route anyway.
Yeah.
With the, both our engineer and planner.
I assume that they may have some questions of Leo.
I didn't know if, if, if your engineer had a presentation to compliment.
He's mostly, primarily going to be going through the reports to give his comments.
So why don't we drive that with questions and going through the report? Does that make sense?
I was just looking through everything. I don't think I have anything direct for the operator, so I would, I don't really have any comments to refer to the board and our planner, and then I'll give the engineer an opportunity to present as he's prepared, and then we can go through the items and make sure everything's satisfied.
I concur. The applicant's addressing, I think we've got questions about the other technical questions. We'll follow the professional testimony.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, why don't we turn it over then to your engineer?
Call Mr. Van de Valk, he'll be in here tonight. One other question. Did you want to open it up to the public for Leo? Is somebody here?
We could bring him back. I mean, he's not going anywhere, right?
Did you mean Leo or our public?
Everyone will get an opportunity to question everyone.
Yeah.
All right, Tyler, we have one mic to hold and pass around, so I'll ask a question, and I'll hand it off to you for as long as necessary. First, can you give us a general overview of the?
Before you do, name and address, business address, file for the record, then you're gonna wanna qualify.
Uh, Tyler Vander Valk, V.A.N.D.E.R., V.A.L.K., owner of Civilized Engineering, sixty-four Valley Road, Butler, New Jersey.
Can you give us the benefit of your professional qualification?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have testified before numerous boards, not this one yet, but, uh, other nearby, uh, boards, Morristown, Chatham, Chester, Bridgewater. Can keep going, but.
In fact, we did one in Denble a couple of years ago, did we?
That's correct, yes.
All right, uh, I would offer?
Any, any objections? You're good? Great, you're good to go. Thank you.
Could you give us an overview of the plan?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I think we're all familiar with the site. Essentially, we have the restaurant, which has operated as a restaurant historically, located.
What you're referring?
Yes, absolutely, I'm sorry. This is the?
Can you mark that? Don't have to, if it, if it is exactly as it appeared when it was submitted, which it looks like.
Yes, this is, uh, last revised March fifth of this year, so I believe that's what the board has in front of them.
And it's the layout and dimensioning plan?
This is sheet number one, correct. So the building is located nearest to the intersection of Myersville Road and New Vernon Road. This is in the southeast corner of the property. Uh, generally, we have a rectangular shaped lot here. Everything is primarily along, uh, the street frontages as we get to the rear of the property where it's undeveloped. Uh, we have regulated areas by the D.E.P. Uh, parking exists along Myersville Road and behind the building to the west. This is, uh, has been paved and continues to be so. The lot located to the north of the building historically has been gravel, uh, so the intent, uh, as part of this application, is to pave that gravel lot, uh, and to stripe it up to standard for the, um, ordinance. Uh, so that includes hairpin striping, proper markings, and signage as far as, uh, stop bars, stop signs, et cetera. Um, and this would also go for the exits and entrances from the roadways. There are a number of other, uh, smaller cleanup items as part of the application, including, uh, repair replacement of the dumpster enclosure, uh, bollards to protect that dumpster enclosure. Lighting was, um, repaired recently. They basically refurbished the existing lighting that was on the property. Uh, that's why we hadn't, uh, prepared a lighting plan as part of the application. As far as the zoning goes, uh, we are in the M.H. Myersville Hamlet zone. I'm not gonna work through the entire bulk table. We're not requesting any bulk variances. There are a couple existing nonconformities specifically related to the front yard setbacks, uh, due to the current building location, which certainly we're not looking to change or adjust. As far as variances go, we are requesting a couple of variances specifically regarding to the signage. Uh, we talked about that briefly already. We have, uh, two circular signs that are being posted on the building, uh, to be viewed from the street frontages. Uh, those signs, while compliant in size, we require a variance for having two instead of one. In this case, I believe that is appropriate, given that we have two frontages. That makes sense, uh, to have that display along both of those streets. The other, uh, variance that we have is in regards to the setback of the freestanding sign. Uh, essentially, what was done there is, there was an existing sign in that location with an existing sign post, so essentially this was just rebranding, so to speak, in that same location. That's why it's nonconforming. Furthermore, we don't have a lot of opportunity to move it back, just due to the, uh, depth of that island by the entrance, so. Interestingly, as I inspected the property recently, I saw that that sign is actually not the shape shown on the plan here, so that threw me for a little bit of a loop, but the reality is that we still are under that max, uh, square footage of sixteen square feet. Um, and complying with the height max of, of eight feet above grade, so.
If I could, Chairman, just for clarification on that, when you said that what you saw was not the sign that appears on the plan, it's incumbent upon us to ask that, uh, what did you see and, uh, does it comply with the ordinance, and how is it different than what's on the plan?
So it's a rectangular sign, rather than the circular sign that's displayed here. Um, the exact dimensions of that sign, I don't have, I don't know if the applicant recalls them. His testimony is six feet by two feet.
That requires some math.
That would be twel- twelve, twelve square feet.
Yes, luckily we have an engineer.
Is he saying from ground to top?
No, no, the sign itself.
Six feet, that, to me, is ground to top, and I know it's not six.
No, 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 six feet wide.
I don't think it's six feet wide, I think it's smaller than that.
Yeah, it is, it is long and, and then the depth is narrow. Um, I'm gonna rely on his testimony, he bought the sign, so. And that seems to make sense with what I saw. I thought it was relatively long, and then it, it was short, and that just simply said, the black bull.
And I guess the board professionals should determine if, if in fact that is twelve square feet. Uh, I think the sixteen square feet is the max sign area, but isn't that for, is that for the ground, one ground sign, or is that total signage, wall and ground? I'm sorry if I'm?
Yeah, no, I don't, that's a question.
I believe it's total.
I, I believe that is specifically under the ground sign section of the ordinance.
That's the section we cited in our letter. We'll just double check now, but it has a height, because that's a separate height requirement of eight feet, as well as a sign area of sixteen, and a setback, so it's, but let's make sure we're correctly citing the ordinance section.
Certainly, what we would stipulate, given that we don't have the exact dimensions potentially, is that this will comply in those regards as far as area and height, so if upon inspection it does not, we'll, we'll adjust it accordingly. It should be one-fifty-five point seven.
Yeah.
Here.
Maybe while they look that up, we'll just touch on the statue, uh, because we do have dimensions on that, which was something that was lacking previously. So again, this is a, a three-D structure. It's not a sign per se, but I think we're gonna treat it as a sign, uh, in the fact that it's branding, uh, for the restaurant.
No pun intended.
I got one, I got two.
Nope.
Almost got a majority, I'm sorry.
This, this photo is literally as it lies. You can see the restaurant in the background, so, um, you get a good sense of what it looks like. The dimensions is six feet long, and as you look at the plan, that's really from building to street, six feet. Uh, the width of that structure is thirty inches, two and a half feet, and the height is fifty inches, just, just over four feet, and that would sit in the lawn area.
If that were a sign, and if that were subject to sign area, what would that?
Yeah.
Come out to as sign area for that separate and independent ground sign?
Unfortunately, it's a volume, so I don't know. It's three-D, I don't, I'm not sure how to interpret that.
I think the easy part, I just asked the question.
Yeah, I think, to be conservative, I think we would have to take the largest view of it, right, which would be the length by the height.
Sure.
Uh, so six feet by fifty inches. Now I have to do some math.
Is, is it a sign or a monument?
Monument sign?
Monument sign, that's also something. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's ultimately, I think, for the board to determine with perhaps input.
How would you treat like a, like a flagpole? How would you treat a flagpole?
Well, you treat it as a flagpole, 'cause our ordinance discusses flagpoles.
Okay.
Specifically as one of the freestanding.
We don't discuss monuments.
It's not uncommon in my experience, this is from the legal perspective, not the planning, which is what you should listen to more. My legal advice is, don't listen to me first, but listen to the planner first, but, but, um, certain types, uh, there are, when walls have certain signage or murals, see, I should say murals or something, that are, uh, uh, determined to be branding for a certain entity, you know, a little girl's face with freckles and pigtails perhaps, or something. Uh, the, the, uh, it might, or, that might, on a wall, might be determined to be a sign, even though it may not technically be a sign, it might be interpreted to be a sign. Um, and also, uh, other structures, uh, might be interpreted to be a sign if it is branding and is utilized that way. Um, it's really, uh, not as much a legal issue as a planning issue, um, hence, the legal advice is, listen first to the planner.
Great. Well, as planners, we write ordinances that try to come up with every situation. Here you have a generic, if your township ordinance has the definition of sign, it's an object, device, display, or structure, or part thereof situated outdoors or indoors, which is used to advertise, identify, display, direct, and attract attention to, et cetera, et cetera. The point being that if it's, if it was a statue of a cat, or a statue of something else, of a couple kids playing, probably not, but if it's of the same name as the restaurant, I think you could certainly interpret it as a sign, since it's directing attention, it relates to the use. Um, unfortunately, the ordinance does not give you direction as to how to measure a volume or a sign of this type. Just similar to a mural, as Mr. Warner pointed out, I would agree there, too. If it's painted in a certain way or a certain color, it's attracting attention.
In your opinion, Mr. Gregl, by name, Mr. Chairman, would it be reasonable to interpret that structure under the ordinance as a sign?
I do, I believe so. In this, given the circumstances of the, what it depicts, and the name of the restaurant being the same, yes.
And I believe I might have heard the applicant's engineer offer it as conservatively a sign, if I wasn't mistaken.
I would agree with that interpretation, yes.
So I think we have a stipulation.
So then the question on that is, what is the maximum width and the maximum height viewed from right angles on this?
Right, uh, it would be fifty inches high, and then six feet is, is the depth, so viewed as coming along Myersville, I think you'd be six by four-point-one-seven, which I'm coming up with a square footage of twenty-five square feet.
Right, so rather than go down this path of volumes, consider it to be a frame, the largest frame that has to be used to capture this object.
Right, the crate it was shipped.
Right. Yeah. One side of the crate it was shipped in, the biggest side.
Section.
And if I'm not mistaken, uh, uh, Mr. Gregl and Mr. Voich, we have a, or now, or now we come to the conclusion that we have a twenty-five square foot second ground sign, along with a twelve square foot first ground sign? Is that correct?
So the first was twelve, right, and the code is one?
Sixteen, I think.
Sixteen.
Is sixteen, uh, eight feet in height.
So thirty-seven versus sixteen. And is there a limitation on number of ground signs, or is there not?
One ground sign, yeah, so for all permitted uses, this is one-fifty-five point seven B, for all permitted uses, providing at least a fifteen-foot principal building setback, one ground sign, not exceeding sixteen square feet in area and eight feet in height.
So if I'm not mistaken, it would be a variance for number of ground signs, two versus one, and square footage of ground signs, thirty-seven versus sixteen square feet, would that be?
Uh, no, it would be for two ground signs, because there is not a fifteen-foot principal setback on the building. So for all permitted uses, providing at least a fifteen-foot?
Oh, I'm sorry, two versus zero.
Yes, it's two versus zero, because of the existing nonconformity of the setback on the building.
Gotcha, and, and for the ground sign, and for the, uh, square footage, though, did I get that one right, at least?
For the square footage, you have one compliant and one that is, what was it? Twenty-some, twenty-five?
Total them and compare thirty-seven to sixteen?
Yes, yeah, and, yeah, I would counter.
Fifty percent, I get a, I get an F, I think.
And then? Uh, and then we'll?
Par for my high school, no.
On?
Thank you.
Then you're good, 'cause then we're covering the setback separately, yep.
Yep.
Okay, so just to try to keep the scorecard for everybody.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. Uh, certainly a unique situation. Um, as far as that variance goes, I would just point out, per definition, I think we agree that it's treated as a sign visually for people driving by. It's, it's less so much a sign as maybe an artistic element, uh, provided to the building, so I, I think there's some good reason to grant that variance in this case, uh, just do the specific subject matter.
Specifically with regard to that condition of variance, do you foresee any negative impact on the nature?
No, no, the one sign is, is placed where the previous sign was, and the, uh, the bull statue is setback far enough from the road and from the intersection. Uh, I don't see any issues. The other thing to, I wanted to mention was, we would like to amend the application, not to throw any more loops here, but, uh, to remove the E.V. in review of the engineer's report, it's understood that the E.V. charging would not be required in this case. So that being, uh, the case, we would rather just, uh, keep those two stalls, but they would be standard stalls rather than E.V. charging stations.
So you would then have sixty-eight spaces versus forty-five required?
Uh, no, we would, right now, we're saying seventy-five, which includes a two-stall credit, so the two-stall credit would go away, so we would have seventy-three total.
I was going by the engine, uh, I'm sorry, I was on the planner's report.
That doesn't mean I got it right, though, so. Check.
No competition, Joe.
I didn't say comparatively, I just said myself. It's a game of golf over here.
So, so why did you not think E.V. was necessary?
So, well, so the E.V., so per model ordinance, uh, and the, the state requirement, it's triggered after twenty-five new parking stalls?
New, as opposed to existing?
Yes, and so by re, repurposing the gravel stalls into, and the prior approval had provided, I believe it was like up to eighty-something stalls. So they're, they're not proposing any new, and they don't trigger that requirement at either our local level or at a state level.
No, if I may, assuming, well, recognizing that it's not required, uh, that doesn't prevent them from doing it if they wanted to, and if there were a benefit associated therewith on a C-two argument, that might be relevant.
Right, or, and if they were to desire to put them in at a later date, I believe they could do that with just construction code permits and not have to seek approval from the board.
Do they have to make ready spaces?
Well, there's no requirement to make them ready, but essentially, we're, what we're discussing is waiving it being part of the application, since it's, it's not required, and then we could stipulate to permit them to obtain a construction code permit without additional board approval for the locations at a later date. Would be, you know, really, the location they would put them is probably the location they would put them in in the future, and any other location would just be as appropriate as that location. So anywhere on that site would be suitable for them to be located at a later date.
And if that were something desirable for the board, would that be something that the applicant stipulated?
You don't have to come, effectively, that you don't have to come back to us?
Yeah.
To go get a construction permit to put them in?
That, that sounds great. Uh, the last thing I wanna touch on is, we did, uh, dig into the ordinance specific in regards to drainage, and I believe that the level of development that we're doing here does trigger the drainage ordinance. Uh, and so we did provide calculations on sheet two of that plan set, along with the appropriate detail. What we're looking to do, uh, since the rear lot is not curbed, uh, it's all just sheet flows off into the grass naturally. The front lot is curbed, so we're gonna take an opportunity to put the dry well in one of those, uh, catch basin locations, um, to get some recharge and to alleviate any extra runoff caused by the project, and that would just overflow into the existing system, which, uh, discharges to the rear.
And that discharges into the open lawn. There's a, a bit of a sw- an existing swell that drains to the same location in the rear.
Yes, that's correct. There's a discharge there now. We're not discharging to that location, we're discharging to the catch basin that discharges there, yep. And that's just for emergency overflow, if the dry well couldn't handle a larger storm of them.
So that's basically the summary of the application?
Yes.
Now, according to the paper, two engineers' comments. Looking at the history toward page three. Check this item, if you could work your way down, beginning at checklist item number eight toward the top of page three.
Yeah, so we didn't touch on the landscape plan, actually, in my direct testimony, but, um, there's really landscaping that has, uh, survived and been cleaned up around the, the building, so those foundation plantings are still in play from what has been there previously. So those foundation plantings are still in play from what has been there previously. And in inspecting the property, they seem to be in, in good health and, and doing their job well along the foundation there. Additional cleanup has been done around the perimeter of the parking lot and the islands along the, the streets, just to get rid of weeds, et cetera. And there are a number of street trees, specifically along New Vernon and that island. So we weren't looking to necessarily do any new landscaping, other than what will be required from the DEP. But certainly, we could respect any wishes of the board. He addressed the tree removal permit. Okay. So we really talked about all of those waivers.
So would you, do you agree that the landscaping that exists today is preserved from the prior use of the restaurant and the operations?
That's certainly what it seems like, yes.
And then, the, specifically, the area that we're talking in the rear, under DEP's enforcement for the cleanup of the prior historic illegal dumping that was done by others, that area, you're still stipulating to work with DEP? So there's going to be some replantings in that area to establish a better buffer back to Myersville Ball Field?
That's correct. Yep. And the DEP is specifically going to give the guidance on what needs to be planted there.
Just so I'm clear on that stipulation or the former part, the, is the stipulation to maintain the present level of landscaping?
Yes.
Okay. Not just to recognize that?
No, to recognize that it's, that it's main, it, it's been able to be preserved from that prior use that was vacant, and then resurrected now with, with the maintenance of the site.
And it will be maintained.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If you could then walk us through the comments on page four?
Yeah. I think I'll highlight just specific answers here that I didn't touch on. We do have the, we heard testimony regarding collection of waste. The ADA, it, I didn't have quite enough spot shots on the topo provided by the survey to exactly show it, but just based on inspection, it certainly seems that there's nothing that exceeds the required slopes for the ADA parking or the access, but we could provide a level of detail needed to show that.
I'll go one further for you.
Yeah.
I believe because we, we have certificates of occupancy operating from the construction code, the construction official also has overlapping jurisdiction to ensure that there was ADA.
Okay.
And I do know that he's diligent on making sure that is in compliance. So I think it's already been affirmed for you.
Okay. Perfect. On the question of traffic circulation, yeah, we do have two entrances and exits, two two-way driveways, one on each road, and there's currently no proposal for turning restrictions. And maybe I'm not fully understanding the comment here, is there an anticipation that there should be additional restrictions?
No, I, I just wanted to recognize that the prior operations, if you go back before 95 approval, the, the whole parking lot was gravel. 95 approval reaffirmed that the paving in the front parking lot on Myersville needed to occur. That did occur. Now, the applicant is seeking to pave the rest of the parking lot. So the legitimacy of the rear parking lot becomes more of an option for patrons to utilize that entrance and exit, as opposed to a gravel driveway. I think what we'll see is a bit of the patrons changing their traffic circulation to operate around the circle and go into what, what works best for them. That's why we had encouraged additional stop signs, stop, striping, and the accommodation of the crosswalk to come across that area. I don't believe we, we need to enforce any restrictions on the, on the park, or on the turning. And if it was to occur, it would occur at the county level, being that it's county jurisdiction on both roads. So I think, I just wanted the board to recognize that there will be a traffic pattern change, an opportunity for people to use both driveways more evenly. And I think it actually improves the circulation of the site, because you're going to have parking out of the rear that can leave and enter the circle to come back around, as opposed to navigating through the site to get to Myersville.
One question?
Yes.
It's more about safety. I know that on New Vernon Road, when looking north, a lot of the overgrowth has been cleaned up, so it's more about line of sight when exiting the property on New Vernon Road and exiting the property on Myersville. Has that improved so that it's not a safety issue? Because it's not just cars traveling up and down New Vernon and Myersville, you have cyclists and runners that also
Sure.
use those roadways. So?
So in my review, it's, it's part of the reason that I'm comfortable with not supplementing landscaping along the parking to screen that parking, because we do have a tight corridor there with the parking, and then the, the tangency to the, to the roadway, and not much shoulder. So I think maintaining the, the trees that are there and not doing ground plantings allows for that site triangle to be preserved.
Agreed. Because as you move more north on that property, you start to get into that DEP area where it is wooded.
Yes.
And there is a, a stream there, just past that berm, there is a stream there.
Right.
So definitely want to make sure that we maintain that line of sight for anyone pulling out, whether it's pulling out where traffic, runners, cyclists, whatever. Thank you.
I, I believe the remainder of this are just comments that were addressed in prior plan revisions, and really don't require additional testimony tonight, unless it's believed otherwise.
And I'm just checking them all through, and I think you're, you're on that.
Certainly, we agree to the required outside agency approvals as required.
So with regard to the improvement, there were some improvements done to the parking lot already, then that was kind of halted to, to allow for the approval. I noticed that some maintenance and repairs of the guide rails were done. There are some additional areas where a guide rail would be encouraged, particularly along New Vernon. There's a sec, a segment of a log hold, kind of as a placeholder.
Yes.
Assume that would be replaced with guide rail.
Absolutely.
Right. And?
I'm sorry, Mr. Voich, you talked about improvement on that back lot. Is that the part that was paved from that New Vernon Road entrance?
Yes. So to date, the work that was done as maintenance on the site prior to coming to the board included redressing the top coat and striping the asphalt parking lot, the Myersville side.
Right.
The New Vernon side was then bladed and graded out with some, with some material to then level in the areas that had depressed and create a constant grade back to matching what was there. So the site still drains in the way it had to the rear towards Myersville Ball Field. And the intent is then to pave that area, stripe it, and reestablish the, the center island.
Because that entrance off of New Vernon used to be gravel.
Yes.
And it's now?
And so that, so that portion had been paved
All the way
Across, right.
Across to the west side.
And then, so then, and prior to that, it was at the curb line of the building.
That's correct.
Right. So that part had been expanded in, in the, in the gra, in the paving, the rest will now be done after approval.
And the rationale for why that was done?
Uh, it was?
Maybe that's not a question for you.
Uh, yeah. No, it's not necessarily a question for me, but I could say, in the owner's defense, it was, the contractor had directly told me that it, he had pushed forward and expanded that area because of the lateness in the season for getting asphalt. So he had made a decision that was not directed by the applicant.
Okay. Fair enough.
And so then, he stopped when I made a site visit and told him to cease.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, one thing I do want to touch on then is the lighting, and I understand it's not your lighting plan, so I'm not seeking for you to testify to the design, but the, it came up in the original submission that there, like you had said, there was retrofitting and repair of the lighting maintenance.
Yes.
And there were some discrepancies between the survey of where lights were located, and then where lights would have to be replaced that had, I believe, been there before. And when I look at the lighting plan, specifically one of those locations being?
Is there a particular zip it for the lighting plan?
Uh, it's, it's a plan by Park West Engineering, Consulting Engineers.
Yeah, it's a, a
E1 dated 11/124.
Yeah. It said was submitted
And it was submitted, yes. As part of the revised submission, well in advance of 10 days. So there is a proposed new lighting.
We're related, you know, the two of us.
Soon, soon, maybe. Maybe we'll get there. We're getting close. One of us might have to change religions.
I was, I was the first born twin.
Uh, so?
I was the second born.
So there's a proposed new lighting plan, and then there's a proposed temporary lighting, lot lighting plan. I see a call out to the center island, there's, there's what were two, I guess, foundation protection boxes. One of them, I believe, still exists, and the other's gone. And there, I believe there were originally two lights, and one remains. And it seems like they're toggling between the two plans of which one is proposed and which one, which one's proposed on each plan. So do you know if both are being proposed to be added? Uh, so my understanding, just to clarify, is that the right side temporary lighting plan, that's the retrofitting that they already did?
Okay.
With the one exception being that of those two diamond shapes on that plan were, that you're talking about?
The center island in New Vernon Road, yeah.
They're showing the northerly one with the light, it's actually in the southerly one, as it stands today.
Which is what's reflected on the left side of the plan.
Right.
Right. That's the toggle, that's the discrepancy. Okay.
Correct. Now, the left side, it is my understanding that the, the applicant is seeking to keep the light that's out there today. This left side was more of if what's out there today was not satisfactory. That, that's my understanding, talking to the applicant.
Okay. So?
I can bring Leo back up for that, but yes. His opinion is that, his opinion is that the lighting is adequate, and is essentially the existing lighting fixtures that have been refurbished, and there are no immediate plans to add any additional lighting.
Okay. So there are areas on the plan showing zero-foot candles, specifically along Myersville Road in the transition between the side and then the rear around the corner of the building. We would have to address the, the design deviations with an approval. If we're accepting them as they are, or taking the recommendation, or requiring the improvements. So the, the plan as, what we would call the, the right side, the temporary parking lighting plan, which is the existing retrofits, does not meet our code requirements.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, would, would there be a relatively simple way of phrasing what would comply, or requiring them to comply if it's not owners?
It's add lighting.
Yeah. Well, it's add lighting.
To review an approval engineer.
It, it's been, it's, it's been proposed on the consultant's plan, but it's not what's being requested. So that, that's not the only solution.
I can say that if the board wants to impose a condition of meeting additional lighting, and you could lead it to the approval of the board's engineer, you certainly consent.
If we, we have testimony that operationally, it works.
Yep.
We can verify that and do a light test if necessary during, because it's now operating. And then we could, we could address that at a later date. Yeah.
And would it be to conform to the ordinance subject year?
Uh, no, it would be to, I would prefer it be to improve the lighting to meet what I would deem as operational deficiencies. So it would, it would meet in the middle between the applicant feeling that it already meets their needs, and me believing that it needs to provide additional coverage.
What is the biggest concern on, when you look at that? Is it that area that's northwest corner?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. For me, it's, it's coming around the building in the middle of the site.
Northwest corner.
Because you're introducing that driveway as a more steady use. So if we see that the building lighting and the ancillary lighting in the building and the area is operating well, and it's just not showing on the plan, then that's going to make me feel comfortable with that.
And is there a walkway, is there a walkway that goes right along that, when you exit the building?
Yes.
And right, there's a walkway all the way to that corner?
Right. So you have sidewalk control.
And all the way over to New Vernon.
Exactly.
So yeah, you probably would want to make sure that you have sufficient lighting.
Right. Whereas I'm not really as concerned with the Myersville Road because of the adjacency to the roadway.
That's right.
And we don't want it, we don't want to have light pollution into the roadway there.
That's right.
And, and to clarify, just a reminder that that light pole in the middle of the parking lot is actually in the southerly island, not the northerly one. So the, the real numbers are
Right. So what we see there, I think, we're going to translate some of that to, to get rid of some of that concern I have, when we see it in the field.
And that would be my concern as well.
Yeah. But it's, it's much easier for us to meet an operational standard than it is to, in the field, confirm compliance with our lighting standards. Just the actual and the, and the paper study will never match.
While we're on the subject of lighting, though, could you clarify sign lighting? And how is the bull going to be lit? Is the, or there's, is there lighting on the signs on the building?
Yes, there is lighting that's specifically directed at these features, the signs.
I don't see that noted here.
Uh, you are correct. This is, I'm learning this live as we speak. Sorry.
If there is a light at the bull, for sure.
This would be upward from the ground, right?
From the western side of the bull. And that picture would be to the left.
He might need to testify. We're getting into unknown realms for myself.
Yeah, I might bring Leo back.
As you know, you remained under oath.
Yep.
There'll be a light right here on the ground.
You might have to hold the mic up, just so people can hear.
So there'll be a light right here on the ground, roughly a few feet from the board, and one more here. And then one will be on the side. So when you pull in the parking lot, you will see the bull. So it'll give you two lights and one in the front.
What's there now?
There are lights, but they are, then I haven't put them on yet.
Okay.
And then it's two lights further on the front, over here, which is a, two lights in the bottom, that will, upright, that will hit, that will hit the sign.
And that's, that's the ground sign?
That's the ground sign, yes.
The, the other ground?
The other ground sign, yes.
Not full of ground?
Correct. And then it's a light, that it's a light also coming from Vernon side towards the circle on a ra, on a circle sign hitting a wall. But no light, when you come on the circle from Chatham side on a wall, you have no light in that sign. Because I just, I thought that the light on that area in that circle, it would be a little bit too, too much of lighting for the cars and people. So I did not put any light there.
Cars approaching will be
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Joe?
Can, is, Joe, are you complete with your list?
I am.
Because then I want to, unless you have a question?
On the lighting, just?
I do want to move over to the planner.
Yeah. So on the lighting, can I just double check that the timing goes off at the appropriate time? And how much lumens is projected skyward? Is that all? Joe, are you comfortable with where the lighting is? Just because it's in a sensitive area down there. And I know we've talked on other applications about any pollution, light pollution, you mentioned the word a minute ago as well.
For the site lighting or the signage lighting?
Site.
The site lighting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I think
Do we testify?
They are at the original approved locations. It, it, the site functioned. So what's, what's that?
Is there really, uh, what, you're like downward?
Shielding?
Screening, uh?
I think, it'll, I'll have the opportunity to address it during a, a night field visit.
I just want to make sure that whatever, existing or not, that it meets any concerns that we have about downlighting. And, but not light pollution going north.
Perfectly understood. And again, we will abide by the, your engineers
Yeah.
recommendations and requirements.
That's fine.
Stipulated.
Want to make that point to you, Joe, just be conscious of that, if you would. Light pollution.
Yeah, there's, there's a relatively tight footprint on these existing fixtures, but they are, they, they appear here without shielding, so there's a location at the Myersville driveway, and then the location just up New Vernon, that might provide some spillage to be, that I'll take attention to.
So you, you've got the details.
Yeah.
I'll leave that with you. So you, you've got the details. I'll leave that with you. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we've raised a number of issues that have been addressed for the most part through the testimony we've been hearing. I mean, the one technical question that I think remains was just on the, how you calculated the square footage of the wall, the, the round signs. Just confirming, uh, was it based on a square or does, if I'm doing the math correctly, maybe using geometry to calculate that. List is 12.6 square feet on the plan.
Uh, you mean 14.8?
I'm sorry, 14, uh.
Oh, that's the, I'm sorry, that's the facade, that's the allowable, uh, the, the proposed 12.6. Right. So that was actually using the, the circle.
Okay.
Not a box.
Figured as much. Okay. Which is, which is consistent with the way the ordinance reads for measuring the area. It's the, whatever has the lettering on it and is an actual sign face. Beyond that, I don't believe we have any other questions on the technical aspects of the, for this witness. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to the board. Any additional questions?
I, I do have some clarifying. But Tracy, was there something you wanted to ask earlier? Or did you ask the point on the parking?
Do I look like I want to say something? No.
But you had, you'd made your point on the parking earlier. That was what I was going to ask.
If you want to take this sign down, so.
Just, just, just on.
I'm polishing the pew over there. I get it.
There you go.
Thank you.
Just for my own benefit at least, on the conditions for prior, of prior approval, we went through the list. So I made a couple of notes. So the bar, you talked about 26 going to 20 seats going to 26 seats.
Yeah, just to clarify, the, the bar itself shows 14 on the plan at the bar. I think that was the restriction in the reserve resolution. When we're referring to 28, I think, was the number in the end. That's including.
30.
30.
We're going with 30.
Yeah, 30. That includes four, four tops that are in the bar area, but it's actual table seating.
So are you trying to strike this from the prior approval, this limit of 20 seats?
Yes.
Was that the intention that I understood? Because you're now saying this plan supersedes.
Strike the 20, 30, and make the 5, 60, 600 square feet.
Right. But that would not be on the conditions of prior approval that you want that whole thing struck because it would now be replaced by this?
Yeah.
So I want to make sure I was good on that, or understood it. Yeah, a number of events we, we can talk about. The, you're going to strike the 210 seats. Is that the intention now? On the, the restaurant is limited to a total 210 seats?
No, 210 as indicated by your engineer and, and Leo is that, that with architectural improvements in the future, we could go up to that. But given the architectural plans that we have, the maximum would be 178.
So you still want to keep with the 210?
Yes.
And recognizing if you did go to 210, my presumption is parking would not be adequate.
So we would have to come back to the board if we're going to exceed the need for 73 spaces.
Right. And if you have more than 25 new, then EV comes into play.
Exactly so.
Yeah, okay. So you, so you want to leave that there. So make sure you, that's going to be left there.
That's okay.
The plan's going to supersede. Okay, okay. Now, can we just double check? And, and the last one was the, the setback of the, the sign, but you, that you want to rescind that as well because of this.
Yes.
The variance relief.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the other ones we already went through. I just wanted to just double check.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Pam, I know you have a question.
Uh, just, you're working with the DEP about plantings and trees.
Yes.
And we have a shade tree commission that lists the trees that are appropriate for planting.
As long as they both agree, we're okay.
That is exactly my point. I would imagine that they, um, if not exactly the same, they're very close.
Right. I would think so.
But can we confer with the list that we have from our shade tree commission?
I can, I can confirm that the applicant will first get the recommendation at the DEP and then can go to your shade tree commission to confirm.
That sounds like a good plan.
Very good.
Speaking of the DEP approval, if you could just clarify, what approval specifically are you pursuing from the DEP? I wondered if you could elaborate on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So it wasn't a permit application. It, it all started when he was doing cleanup back there of materials that had been dumped. And DEP enforcement came out. Once they realized what he was doing was actually what they would want him to be doing, they sort of just teamed up on that effort. So they, DEP enforcement has been overseeing that.
So there is a, an open case with regards to that or has the case been closed with regards to the removal activity?
Whether it's been closed, I don't know. I, I would think it's still open until the trees are planted.
Correct.
And I'm getting a nod, yes.
Yeah. So normally, if you were to propose disturbance in that area, it would have triggered permits. You would have asked for it by application. The, the area was historic dumping illegally and they were in good faith cleaning that up, not realizing they were in a, in a regulated area. So DEP enforcement looked at it as opposed to DEP land use for approvals. And enforcement decided that it won't go to land use for an approval. It would stay with them to be mitigated appropriately.
So, you know, the concern turns to then safety of occupants and people coming onto that site. Will there be improvements with regards to protection from whatever the contaminants are at?
Uh, it was, my understanding was just, um, construction debris and other remnants gravel and other materials that were dumped there by some unknown third party. And those materials were taken out and removed and then the area was leveled. That grading activity was the only objection enforcement had.
So, so there's not a risk with respect to the planting of the future trees?
No, no, no.
In regards to disturbing more.
Right.
Impacted soil.
Right. Topsoil is brought in, I sure, would, would have met residential standards, right? So that area is then restored and stabilized. And then there's the barrier of the guide rails to demarcate the area, the, the patrons. And then the regulated area behind it that will start to naturally grow back in around the enclosure for the dumpster.
And then the final question, I mean, will there be a need, Joe, in your estimation for some sort of a deed notice on then that site? Or whatever remains? Or will it be clean?
No, we would leave it.
Be clean now to most restrictive residential standards?
Right. I mean, it, it was, it's, it's in DEP enforcement's jurisdiction and their discretion. And based on the nature of the materials that were there and their understanding, I don't believe any sampling done. But it was all removed and then it's been restored and stabilized or is, is being restored and stabilized with clean import.
Great. Thank you. Down this end, any other questions?
What I wouldn't mind doing at some, is just go through the variances seats and additions.
Yeah, can we, can we, yeah, we'll come, we'll maybe come back to that. But yes.
Because that was going to help me frame my question. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page before I ask my questions.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess the work of cleaning up the back, removing all the debris is a case of no good deed goes unpunished. So apologies for that. And there's a lovely nursery right down the street, but I'm sure they have trees that you can purchase. The garbage bin is definitely a concern for me because I had seen the previous occupant. There could be up to 20 vultures hanging out up in the trees and so forth. So far, I've only seen one. The number of times I've run down that road and cycled down that road. So hopefully it only stays one. So please keep an eye on that, that garbage. For clarity, was there any talk or consideration for if possible, tent erected in the drive, in the parking lot or outdoor music? Or is everything contained inside the building?
Everything is inside of the building. Nothing outside.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification, you meant patio?
Patio, but patio has a speaker music. That's not a.
It's not enclosed.
Yeah, correct.
But that music.
Correct.
It was screened in by the previous owner. I think you've moved the screens right now. There may have been a door that accessed that, at least the rear patio, not the one on Myersville. But I think you're maybe planning to use that as potential.
Correct.
Guest area.
Yes, and I'm planning to screen it.
And no, no music, live music or speaker music outside?
No.
Not even in those.
On a, on a, on a patio, yes, but the music will be lower for dining. It won't be.
Because there is a resident just to the west.
Correct.
Right? There's two residents over there. Okay. There is a ball field behind you on the north side.
Yes.
Uh, I had seen when the property was vacant, number of the participants or family members would come and use your parking lot as a, a place to park their cars. Now, they have improved the number of parking spots at the ball field. You may find yourself with some extra cars in your parking lot, even though you want to put a sign up saying for patrons only. Or you're going to have, have the police come or the tow truck driver or you have to.
I, I don't think I'm going to really go after them at all because if they come, they're on Sunday afternoon.
Okay.
And it's fine with me if the town people park there in the corner. Not a big deal.
All right. So just people warned, I have seen. Can I add one question?
Yes, please.
I'm just looking at, um, Google Street on this. Looks like there's a build code door. You know, solid door. Is that what you see there?
On the north side.
Uh, in the back where the parking lot is.
Yeah.
Is that what?
Yeah, it should have like a cross.
Yeah, it's on the corner.
And I guess the question is.
Those are the basement doors, yes. They go straight down the basement.
Okay, you bring in supplies?
Supplies, yes.
Okay. Where does garbage come out?
Garbage comes through there out and goes straight down to the, yeah.
Okay, so the garbage is going to be taken out of that.
Through those two doors, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you mentioned a patio. I don't see a designated patio.
It's called porch.
You're, are you calling that a porch?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's not a, an uncovered patio?
No.
Okay. That you're planning.
Maybe I misspoke, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm going to turn it over to Steve here. Okay, please.
Yeah, just want, just want, yeah, just a couple of, and there was also a request of, with respect to variances. So as I understand the variances, and we can do this again right before we vote, as is my custom. But the number of wall signs, two versus one max permitted, sign setback for the non-ball ground sign being zero setback versus 10 feet. Uh, and then for the num, uh, sign area, we have two ground signs that were, the bowl and the non-bowl. Ground signs, 37 square feet total versus 16 square feet max permitted. And then, um, since we're considering both of those ground signs and there's a setback requirement in our ordinance, technically, I guess, uh, from our planner and engineer, uh, we actually have two ground signs proposed, whereas technically none are permitted in light of the deficient setback. Those, I think, are the four variances that we're talking about. Is there a coalescence around that?
Yes.
Right.
Works in me.
Uh, and, and I understand we, uh, don't have planning testimony per se, but these are both variances. And the board is well familiar with the alternative bases for both variance relief. See one undue hardship and/or see two benefits substantially outweigh the detriment and serve the purposes of the MLUL, both requiring, of course, the two prongs of the negative criteria. The, uh, from the engineering perspective, I understood, uh, the number of signs testimony to be there's a two, two streets, two, uh, there's a, the angled wall signs, I take it you're saying might be a better, from an engineering perspective, a better approach than having just one wall sign. Is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
And as far as the setback, I understood that the, you're utilizing at least for the non-ball ground sign, uh, the, um, the existing setback of essentially no setback, correct?
Yeah, we were using the existing structure and just replaced the signage.
And is there, if I understa, well, you tell me, did I understand there to be some limitation on going further back with that sign? Setting it back further? And/or was it better for some reason to have it closer to the property line?
Well, both, yes. So there's a fairly narrow, um, island and fairly shallow behind it to be used for that sign. Uh, and then also given that that sign has historically been there without issue, uh, from a practical perspective, it makes sense to continue that.
And then with respect to the sign area, 37 square feet versus 16 square feet total for, uh, that's ground sign, sign area. Just over, I guess, twice the maximum permitted from an engineering perspective. What is the reason why that would either be beneficial or would be, it would be undue hardship to, uh, to comport with this.
Yeah.
Ordinance or both in your opinion?
Right. So I think we mentioned that this, the sign proper, so to speak, that actually says the restaurant name, that is conforming in size. Uh, and this other item, which is the statue, while per the regulations would count by definition as a sign, we feel it's almost more of a landscape feature or a, um, artistic feature, so to speak, uh, that really sits in that yard area. It, it's not the same impact as having so much signage on a site that you feel like you're blasted with advertising. This is really acts quite a bit differently than, than typical signage. So I.
Are you saying that the 25 square foot bowl is not the same as a 25 square foot sign that said Black Bowl Restaurant?
Absolutely, right.
Is, is your argument?
Yes, correct, correct.
I'm sorry, uh, and then, uh, two ground signs versus technically zero permitted, given the setback deviation, um, what is your, from an engineering perspective, what is your argument with respect to that being better than zero ground signs or, uh?
Right. I believe.
Complying with the statute, excuse me, the ordinance specifically, uh, why would that, you know, be a hardship in your opinion or both?
Well, I, I believe that we're limited to zero because the setback of the building is deficient. But if you actually look at the site plan, first off, our deficiency is only by six inches along Myersville Road. So it's hardly noticeable as you're driving by. Furthermore, as you move further west on the property to where the signs are located, that setback to the building opens up much more substantially. Uh, so practically speaking, um, yes, we, we are off by six inches in that one corner closest to this intersection. But where the signs are located, we actually do have compliance setback to the building.
And that would afford you the opportunity then to have one ground sign, but you're asking for two. But I guess the fact that the second is not your typical sign.
Right.
Play into your contention?
Exactly.
And the first sign being also duplicative to wayfinding to the entrance?
Right at the driveway, correct.
Yeah, the, the only reason is going through that quickly is because you have two new board members.
Yes.
So I want them to understand, if you wouldn't mind, just what, before we have a discussion as well, that they.
All the conditions?
That they're aware of some of these aspects that we are going to be looking at, yes.
It, it, so in addition to the deviations, the conditions?
Yeah, just if you don't mind, because I think it might be just helpful for.
I think that's fine. I do want to get to any public questions.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, please.
Sure. So, so real quick, the, the, as our board members now, uh, it, uh, when you be, when you vote later, you'll be deciding not simply whether to approve or deny an application, uh, but all approvals in land use are with conditions. So what you'll be determining is whether to approve it with all the stipulated two conditions and possibly even imposing some that weren't stipulated. That's conceivable. Um, or in the alternative, denying the application. I always joke denials are unconditional. The, the, it's not a great joke, but you know.
It's good enough. Tom Parry, your other joke.
I was just, I was just, thank you. I was just saying apropos of most of my jokes, but, uh, my twin beat me to it. The, um, the, uh, so the conditions that I have are basically the items set forth in the planner and engineer's report in that order, Joe. And, uh, the, um, and as well as the conditions of prior approval on pages six and seven. They're essentially modifying some of those conditions, as you heard my colleague to my left go through some of them. The bar shall be limited to 30 seats and 600 square feet, no dance floor except private events. By the way, I don't know if anybody wanted to have. By the way, I don't know if anybody wanted to have any limitation on the number of private events or not, that's up to the board and the applicant. The restaurant uses shall be emphasized, eat-in service shall be emphasized. That stays the, other than private events, no entertainment, other than the limited entertainment listed for those holidays, including the seven holy days of Mardi Gras. There shall be no pool tables video, that stays the race trudicata. I'll talk to you about it one day, about what that really means, but what it really means to me is you can't have that provision in there. So it's a good thing it's being removed. The restaurant is limited to the 210 max. We're keeping, I think, all the other ones, but we're not, we're, the request was to eliminate, all exhausts are to be directed up, HVC on the roof hidden, and the other one to be, requested to be eliminated from the prior 1995 approval was the very last one about the setback 10 feet at least for the sign on New Vernon, because we have a request for variance relief for a sign with no setback. As well as a few other conditions we went through, they'll be cooperating with both, well, with DEP with respect to cleanup enforcement and landscaping, including planting of trees, and then also, where possible, also comporting with our shade tree commission's requirements, I believe, as non-invasive species, would that be?
Yeah.
The, and then, the other conditions would be, they would be permitted to administratively comply via the construction code for any EV spaces in the future, without having to get land use approval. They'd maintain the existing level of landscaping, as well as comply with DEP requirements with respect to landscaping in the rear. The existing would be more to the front that they'd be maintaining. Encouraging guardrails along New Vernon in particular, and the spot that our engineer isolated. Add lighting to improve, the lighting to meet operational deficiencies, or to, I guess, to eliminate operational deficiencies, meet operational standards, subject to the review and approval of our engineer. And there may be a lighting test, and again, particularly with respect to site lighting, subject to the review and approval of our board engineer, so as to avoid light spillage and night, not dark sky compliance, but whatever.
Light glow, light pollution?
Yeah, there's something in the sky, but yes, light pollution. And I think those were all the conditions.
So, if I may, since I attempted to get them all in here, and then I'm looking back at the prior resolution, I realized that I had started on condition eight, which was specific to the use, on page 10 of the prior resolution. It actually starts in conditions on page eight, but I'll just quickly summarize. The first being regarding final architecturals of the building, which is not changing and not applicable to the application at hand. Second being final landscaping was not specified by the board, but collaborated with the applicant by a subcommittee later, which is essentially what we've discussed about the, keeping with the landscaping plantings. Landscaping to be permanently maintained, which was stipulated. The, there was a walk on the plans, which led it to a different entrance, which had been removed. Exterior lighting was to be turned off when the restaurant was closed, and the site lighting was subject to a night test for operational purposes, as opposed to our code. So our condition is compliant with that prior. Only security lighting deemed necessary to be left on all night. And with respect to the use for the bar, number seven, site plan approvals granted exclusively as a restaurant, an accessory bar, not for a nightclub, singles bar, et cetera, with the exception of the upstairs room, which may be used for parties. So it was already incorporated into the prior use conditions.
Thank you, I hope just to see a little bit more, thank you for doing that.
Any questions on those conditions, before I open it up to the public?
Well, since I'm the new kid, I get to ask all the dumb questions. Is it customary to grant a CO to a property before final approval of the site plan?
So, the application in front of us is for the site improvements, and those site improvements are going along with a longstanding effort by the applicant to address prior construction code issues by the prior owner he purchased from. So, the history of this site is that the prior owner purchased the site, done renovations without permits, had been in violations with our construction code office, and been in a longstanding matter. That was then resolved by the purchase of the property by our applicant, and he worked in good faith from that purchase with the construction code office to address all those code deficiencies, and get all the required permits for all the work that was done before him, fix that work, and do the work appropriately under UCC, under construction code. From that point, that matter resolved itself with COs, TCOs and COs.
TCO being temporary?
Temporary, and then the final CO. I had expressed a concern that we were, we had a pending application, that the timing was not going to work out to release the COs. And with that, worked as in my township engineer role, on the appropriateness in this scenario of issuing the CO for the purposes of operating the restaurant, consistent with the prior approvals, until they were in front of us for the site improvements. So, we, this is not normal.
Yes, sort of an exception.
But it's all in good faith from the efforts of the applicant when they purchased the property, and working to correct the prior sins of the person they purchased from. And then what is in front of us is their desire to beautify and enhance the site itself to support the restaurant they improved.
That makes sense, thank you. And the other question was just, I didn't see a lot of separation between first floor and second floor activities. So when we refer to restaurant and the exclusion, except for these three events, would that apply to the second floor as well?
My interpretation of the condition was the entire restaurant on those dates.
Being first and second?
And then, and then the upstairs would be able to host private parties at the discretion of the business.
Do we want to put that somewhere in here, the second floor? It is not just Christmas, New Year's Eve, seven days of Mardi Gras, that the second floor, you can have what, as long as it meets the occupancy standards, you can have any event up there?
Well, yeah, we'll add it to reaffirm what was existing condition seven of the 95.
Certainly there's an approval. The resolution will not only include conditions of approval, but will also include clarifications such as, thank you for the one you just...
Well, my husband's got a big birthday coming up, maybe I want the second floor.
No discount.
But it's not Christmas or New Year's for Mardi Gras.
Does he happen to celebrate for seven days straight?
We can do that, he'd love to.
As a board attorney, let me advise that I'd be the only one to make jokes that can get me in trouble.
So noted.
But, but do not.
I read the 1995 provision where they talked about special events to almost be like, the restaurant shouldn't be hosting events, and like bringing in a DJ and whatnot. I feel like there's a difference between the restaurant, like being like, "Come to singles night on Friday night, we have a DJ coming in," and him hosting a 50-person small affair for a birthday party that might have a DJ. I don't want to see like any sort of club atmosphere or anything, but, for example, like my sister just got married up in Sparta, and there was 20 of us, and we had just like a very small DJ at Mohawk House, and it's a normal restaurant, just like yours, and so I just want to make sure that we're not restricting. Because it's not just, you know, the applicant, like it's for members of the community that want to have a facility that's accessible for different types of events. So, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but I'd like to hear what other people think about, like making sure that this isn't being misinterpreted, because I think it is. I think this is like, the restaurant shouldn't be hosting, I don't know, something other than a Mardi Gras event, apparently that's okay, but, so, I don't know, so I'll... Is that, is that what you, is that what the applicant also thinks? I'm not trying to speak for the applicant, but I sense that there's a miscommunication between your very fair question, Pam.
I think with the upstairs being a private party space?
I'm just talking the restaurant, I don't think, I don't...
It's customary.
I don't know many restaurants that you go to that say, "Well, we can only, the town is only letting us have you sit in this place" to have, I've never heard that before.
So using the whole restaurant for the private party?
If, if that is, do you do that in your other one, in your other town?
I mean, over there, we have a bigger place, it's 200 chairs per floor, there's two floors, it's 400 chairs, there is three bars, bigger operation. However, I understood for the private event, or for the parties, only Christmas, only this, understood if you do something big, you kind of close the parking lot, you make it a big deal, the whole town knows about it. For my private event in a restaurant, I don't think that I need to ask the board that I'm gonna have 40 people upstairs with a little small DJ for their own private birthday party.
But I think the question stems from, is the whole facility?
Or the whole facility, if I close it to the private event for the night.
But it's not even the whole...
Would you do that, I guess, is the question?
What I would do based if the client willing to pay to close the restaurant down for the night.
But it's not even, I'm talking about, I've been there, I'm not even talking about, like, it says there shall be no groups except on Christmas, New Year's Eve, or the seven days of Mardi Gras.
Could be any day at any time of the year.
I think that...
A general relaxing of the prior language.
Yeah, because he may just have a group of 30 people that is gonna take up part of the first floor for a rehearsal dinner, or like something like that.
We're trying to control, I mean, I hate to bring it up, South Street in Morristown. That's not what we're looking for in Myersville.
We got a long way to go before we become...
There's a much better way.
50 liquor licenses.
I think you can control that and not say there shall be no groups other than New Year's Eve.
Correct.
So, however you want to proceed, I just, that was one question I had, and then also comment just about, I think, we should clear that up.
Just to be clear, though, and please do make the comment, but we haven't yet gotten two questions or comments from the public.
Yep, so we'll come back to the board for...
Yeah, however you want to.
Yeah, we'll come back to the board to provide input before we decide on...
I just want to make sure, because I read all the relief and the conditions, I didn't want anybody to think we're warming into voting.
Yeah, no, 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 not at all.
We see each other.
In fact, I think this is a good segue to open it up to the public, so if there's anybody who would like to provide questions or comments, please step forward. Just stating your name and your town affiliation.
Well, these days, we'll get another mic. Things are tight here in this town. Charles Zarenowitz, Millington. And I don't know who this gets directed to from the applicant. But in your conversations with the New Jersey DEP enforcement, and discussions tonight, you said that no trees were removed. Was anything removed from the area in the wetlands, other than the debris and soil, whatever's left by this victim that dumped things?
Come on up and please, yeah, why don't you just grab a mic right there, perfect.
I mean, I can't list everything that was there, there were pipes there, there were debris there, there was old woods that actually, trees that had fell down, and they were completely on the floor. There were some of, I think, bricks, and somebody dumped even bricks there. So, there's a lot of different debris, can I name you specific what was it, but most was debris.
Okay, you mentioned trees, so you didn't take any trees down, but there were a lot of trees there that were left, that you had to remove?
Correct, they were fallen down, and they were pretty much dead.
Were these trees that were there, I'm assuming, since the DEP is requiring you to replace trees, these trees were in the wetlands?
I, no, they were not in the wetland, they were behind, right by the property, but they were, what DEP says, they're supposed to be 300 feet from the water to be...
There's not only the wetlands, but there's the riparian area.
Correct, yes. In that riparian area, they were asking to add more trees, if I'm willing to. They did not force me either, they actually would you add some trees?
Okay, in the current area to be paved, is it currently stone, or is there a base of asphalt already in place in the driveway?
There is a, first, it's about six inches or eight inches of gravel that was before there. When we paved an existing paver, when we milled that, we put that mill in the gravel area.
Regarding the signs and this branding of the ball, are they currently in place? And if so, when they were, how long have they been in place?
The ball has been roughly six months there, maybe more, seven months in the summertime. The sign has been put up roughly by November. I did not put lights on, because since we were not approved yet, we're just staying there. That's why the lights are not up.
There's at least one drain from a downspout on the building draining into New Vernon Road. For the safety of the drivers, bikers, and pedestrians, especially in the winter, would you be willing to divert this stormwater somewhere on your property?
I don't think I can, because the actually, naturally, water, debris goes the other side.
The water is coming down the downspout on your building, running underground, coming to the Belgian block, out onto New Vernon Road.
Your question is, isn't that correct?
It's the water that comes from the building goes straight down by the street, and it goes in actually, in a, in a stream, then it continues further down. There is a stream there that cuts the Murmur Road.
What I'm asking is for the safety of the drivers, the bikers, and the pedestrians, especially in the winter, can you divert this water that's coming from the downspout off your building, underground, out the Belgian block into New Vernon Road? Can you divert that when it's coming down the downspout to your stormwater management system?
I don't think I can, no.
Is this something you could opine on, please?
Have you submitted to and received approvals from the county planning board?
We did, yes.
And that included review of any drainage concerns to both county roads by the county engineer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Personally, I'd have to investigate it further, if there's still an open question on it.
I think the question is, could this be done from an engineering standpoint?
The issue is like the drainage that we're putting in is on the opposite side of the building, so that would be difficult without routing all the way around, so there's a question of elevation there, does the pitch work, and then secondly, you know, how much sidewalk and curbing has to be ripped up in order to make that happen, so...
Would it also require county approval?
To relocate it? No.
No, to relocate an interior to site would be part of our site plan approval. Me asked this question of the owner. In renovations to the building, did you change any direction of the roof gutters to downspouts?
No.
So, the condition that's being discussed was there prior to your purchase? The discharge of roof gutters to the county road is, remains the same... The discharge of roof gutters to the county road is, remains the same from your purchase through today?
Correct. I didn't add or change any direction of water.
So, I would assume it's part of prior approvals of the site? And was also then reviewed recently by the county?
I was just gonna make that point. It was also reviewed, reviewed and approved by the county.
Correct.
The county didn't raise any concerns? Thank you.
There has been, whenever this was approved, and what's happening now, and we...
Sharonowitz, can I swear you in, so it counts?
Sure.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give, any testimony you already gave, and any testimony you will give in the future in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I guess the question becomes, there's a new owner here. Conditions have changed. We've been published, this town's been publicized that this is a great place to ride bikes. You get on Nuverna Road on a Saturday, and a Sunday, or even in the mornings, it's very heavily traveled by bikers and people cutting through. What I'm asking for, and maybe the county missed this, if you have stormwater coming out onto Nuverna Road that's heavily traveled by bikers especially, it's a dangerous situation. Maybe they're not aware, the county isn't aware of the use of that road for bikers. This was fine when it was the Myersville Inn in 15 years back. Conditions have changed. So, we need a little consideration here of trying to re-engineer this process to taking a, a, a downspout, put it into dry well as opposed to running in the road. I'm not an engineer. Let's talk about conditions that changed.
So, that, that's why I asked specifically from the time of their purchase, if he's modified those roof leaders. Because the rain hasn't stopped falling since the Myersville Inn closed, and the roof leaders haven't stopped discharging to the location that they discharge. So, if, if perhaps the county is not aware, but the county specifically has jurisdiction on matters that abut their roadway or impact drainage to county facilities. And so, they have two bites at the apple for both the frontage on the roads to the county, which is why they initially went there, but they also have it for any drainage impacts of this site, or a site that's interior from the county road.
Just, just be aware. If you've gone to our Myersville Christmas tree lighting, a lot of people walk up and down that road by the restaurant, and if there's ice and water there, we're gonna have some problems, we're gonna have some lawsuits, okay? Conditions do change.
I, I agree, and, and...
And just because the county may have made a mistake, we don't need to make the mistake. This board doesn't need to make a mistake.
That, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, the county has jurisdiction, it's their roadway, it's their improvements, it's their infrastructure. We cannot compel them to do anything that they don't wish to work with us on. And the county is in constant conversation with the municipality about the Myersville Circle, circulation and traffic, as well as the lines of sight and improvements to that intersection for drainage and circulation.
I think we can say duly noted.
Thank you.
For your comment.
I appreciate that. That's what I'd like to hear. Thank you for your time.
Duly noted. Thank you for your comment.
Just as an avid cyclist, I've not had any problems, uh, riding my bike, uh, down that road, or running down that road with ice and/or water. Also during the, uh, holiday, and thank you very much for turning on the Christmas tree, uh, at Christmas, that roadway is blocked, and you cannot walk that way, because that's where the fireworks are going to be set off from. It is blocked right at the top where the circle is. So, no one's walking that way. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any last comments. I, I assume that you have no other summation comments. You kind of already did your summation. I want to give both the applicant, attorney, an opportunity to sum, summarize, and then we'll come. I don't know if you have any additional summary comments?
The, uh, why don't we have the, uh, applicant? Since, since I, uh, I believe the testimony is closed, we've closed the public portion for questions and comments, just for clarification sakes. So, I think it's summation time, and then the board can deliberate and vote, and if the board wishes me to go back through relief and/or conditions, they know where to find me.
Very, very short summation. I agree with your summary of what the conditions are, what the stipulations are, and we hope that the board approves. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. What I'd like to do is just kind of go through, uh, board members. Bob, starting with you, if, uh, you'd like to just offer your perspective, or just gonna kind of do a quick discussion with regards to the application. Any comments you'd like to make briefly?
Okay, so this is my first application.
Yes. Welcome.
Gee, thanks. Um, s- s- some of the things that seemed intuitive, based upon the way the, the whole restaurant's laid out, you know, the two signs on two main streets seem to make sense, and if that requires variance, I can understand that. Because it, it, it sounds like most of it's thinking that there's one face to a frontage street, and that's one sign. So, seems logical to me. The, the bull is an interesting feature, um, and as far as I'm concerned, it, it's okay with me. I, I didn't know it was fiberglass. I'm glad it's fiberglass, because it's on a road, and that would have concerned me if it wasn't. The, the lighting stuff that Joe brought up, I didn't catch when I looked at the lighting piece. I appreciate that. I appreciate the explanation on the DEP involvement. Yeah, no good task goes under. Punished. Um, and having worked with the DEP a lot, good luck in getting your answers. Other than that, uh, I, I thought the reason we brought this to us primarily was on the parking lot, right? And I appreciate all the background information. Now, I understand how a lot of this transpired over the years, and, um, that the conditions as laid out in the, the old Myersville Inn approval is, is pretty consistent with what they're asking for. So, from my perspective, I think I understand, and...
Great. Thank you. Good summation. You're, you're an old hat at this, Bob. You're seasoned beyond your, your, what you've said, your experiences.
Yeah. Engineers are engineers.
Do you have anything to add, Scott? We'll go right down the line.
Yeah, I'll just add one thing. Um, you know, this idea of, um, closing the restaurant and reserving it for private groups, I, I think it should, it should not be left indeterminate how many times a year that could happen. I'll throw out something arbitrary, four times per year, once every three months. I, I just feel that that's a, that that's a gap that we should define.
If I may, just for clarification, that's for the whole restaurant?
Right.
And not the second floor to have private events?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Does that seem reasonable, four times a year?
That was 12.
Again, it could be a entire year, I mean, many of them will happen.
Yeah.
But it could be sometimes, you know, every week someone wants to add a restaurant to themselves.
You don't get to store them up. If you don't use them, you...
It's gonna be very hard, uh...
Four years.
If it's four, then it's four limited, and it's...
What do you think is...
I never needed more than four.
What do you think is a fair maximum?
Mine, I suggest once a month.
Once a, once a month, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, 12 a year, probably, a few years, but, okay? Because you might get three, four in Christmas time, or a month in December, or you might get it in June, while schools are getting closed, everybody wants to add it.
I'm just curious how you're gonna manage that, though, when people expect to show up for dinner and they find out it's closed?
Well, if you do that, that'll be in advance.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that'll be in advance, and everything, uh...
People call for reservations, and I'll say nothing.
And, and again, if we do stipulate to that, there still would not be any outside tents, except, this would still all be contained within the structure.
Inside.
If I need something outside in the parking lot, or something outside of the walls in a sense, then I would come to the town, ask for permission.
Well, you'd have to get a permit, I guess.
For the day off, to serve outside the parking lot, let's say, example, those...
That, that's a good point. Uh, the previous owner, uh, when it was operating, used to have events in the parking lot. It was once a year that they did something. The community would come in, and they would do some, so that might be, and a permit would have to be. We're not talking about the Christmas tree lighting. We're talking about another event.
Yeah, right. That'd be addressed under our temporary event.
Okay. Good point.
If you're using the parking lot, then you probably have more loud music.
Yep. But it's during the day, and it's during the day, and it's published, and, yeah, okay.
Great. Thank you. Good comment. Thank you. David, anything to add?
Yeah, a couple, just on that point. So, how would we, right now, it's about nine days, like, Christmas, two or three days, New Year's Eve, seven days of Mardi Gras. Presumably, not the seventh day of Mardi Gras. Right? So, it's about nine, 10 days. Are we gonna strike the whole, the whole language here, and it's just now focused on the 12 days that we just mentioned? And that allows you then to have DJs?
I think that makes sense.
That just to strike the whole...
Just get out of the Mardi Gras.
Get rid of that whole...
Get out of the Mardi Gras.
We're getting out of the Mardi Gras.
Unless we allow, yeah, unless that's, those dates are...
Mardi Gras party.
I think we should allow this Mardi Gras.
Yeah, right.
It's already over.
I'm not even sure they have seven days of Mardi Gras in New Orleans. Every day, every day is Mardi Gras. I gotta get out more.
From the Epiphany until Ash Wednesday is all of Mardi Gras.
You gotta go down to New Orleans.
As opposed to 40 days of Lent? Can we go down that path?
Well, that's why you do it, so you get it all out of your system.
All right, anything else, David?
Yeah, just one minor, minor point. I think what, as you're picking back and put on Scott, the statue, it's, it's, no opinion, no, no issue particularly, but I think the size matters here a little bit, because we have to define the size, and I think we have to probably go three-dimensional, because it's a unique situation, because I'd hate not to have that somehow encapsulated, because next week, you come down with a ball, that's five times the size. So, I think it's appropriate to size it, even if it's with the actual size, and right now, 50 inches, six foot, whatever it is. But I think that should be something that we...
Define a six foot by 50 inches by 30 inches.
Yeah, I think that should be defined somewhere.
You're not gonna make a bigger ball.
So, don't come back with...
Ball's already there.
Wait, you get a point. I don't want to prove a statue without some dimensions. So, that was my last comment.
Good.
Thank you for anything else, by the way.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm opposed to the, uh, putting a number of how many times you can close your, uh, building to a private event. I'd rather leave that to you to manage. I will say that this does meet the master plan, especially for the Myersville, the rehabilitation of the, of the circle there. So, thank you very much for taking that on. And the other piece, uh, that is aligned with our master plan is the two EV spots. I don't know if you're gonna want to break through that asphalt to run lines out to put in two spots, or have it pre-wired and then revisit it a later date. I don't know. But going from 73 to 75, or 75 to 73, you may want those two parking spots, and there's plenty of people with EV cars out there, and I think that just might be a, a draw, uh, that you have it. Maybe a subtle draw, but a draw. So, I'm, I'm, uh, in favor of keeping the, uh, provision about adding the two EV spots. That's my comment. Can you expand on why, why are you opposed to limits on number of... You know, I, I think we're both gonna be...
I have a suggestion that might help articulate what I think I'm gonna say.
Okay.
I think sometimes people come before us, and we start analyzing things that are outside the application. I understand part of this was in the existing, uh, 1995 resolution, which is, which I understand. But I just want to make sure we're not overreaching as a board. And so, what I think, um, I want to point out that the Sterling Hotel
Thank you.
closes for special events and doesn't have to come before. I think it's just like a little silly to like dictate to a business owner when they can have a private party. But I think what you're gonna agree with is they shouldn't have a DJ maybe more than 12 times per year, maybe something like that. But I think you should be able to have a private party whenever you want. And I suspect it's not gonna be that often, because you're a restaurant, and you're a restaurant, and I don't think we need to dictate it, because I think, we just had something like this a few weeks ago.
I think the price is gonna dictate it.
Right. So, I don't want a DJ every day of the year, but I think at Christmas time, he might have a 50-person event one day, a 20-person event another day, and then 100-person event another day. And we could talk all day about all the different restrictions, and I think it's just, I think it's overstepping. So, I, 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 yeah. So, I just...
Yep, fair enough.
Suggest like a DJ max of like 12 times a year, like, maybe like outside hired musicians, DJs, maybe that's a 12 times a year max. I'm not speaking for you. That's just my suggestion. I don't know if the applicant would...
When you say outside, are you talking again being outside exterior of the building?
No, I'm sorry. And, and like a third-party external contracted musician.
Turning, turning the space into a venue as opposed to a restaurant use.
Right.
Closing for a private party is still complimentary to the, the use, and inside the building is still not going to be perceived by the external public any other way than the business operating during its business hours.
Yeah, and I just think it's very, very common for restaurants to get phone calls, "Hey, can you host our office luncheon?" "Hey, can you host whatever?" And I think if we're not super clear, all of a sudden, he's gonna be like, "Wait, am I allowed to do this?" You know what I mean? And then all of a sudden, even us as, you know, or somebody from another town is gonna be like, "I can't use that place, because they said that we can't, you know, have a 20-person event there." So, I just want us to be very clear and very careful. Um, and then also the comment about how will they know? Again, the hotel, I've shown up, and I've, and I'm like, "Oh, they're having an event there, like, what's going on?" So, I think it's just not as problematic as we might think it will.
I don't think we were talking about large groups of 30 or 40 people. We're talking about the whole restaurant, right?
But even if it's the whole restaurant, and there's no DJ, is that a problem? Why do we care?
Basically, all the reservations are booked up by one person paying the tab. It's still a restaurant use, is what you're getting at.
So, then how do you, how do you, agree with you. I love the logic. So, then how do you deal with this DJ thing?
And how do you deal with the, the resolution language?
Yeah, I think you just, well, maybe I'll work on something for 10 seconds, if you want to give your comments.
Sure, please.
I, I agree with that. Um, don't want to be DEI here, but these are all Christian events. New Year's, I guess you could say, not necessarily. What if somebody wants to have an event at the end of Ramadan, or, or something else? I would say not to limit ourselves to just...
I would obstruct that, though.
Striking that language.
So, just omit that.
A question of number of times.
And, uh, this really has nothing to do, other than to encourage the applicant to be a good neighbor. There's, um, Mountain Hill is right there. You've got Casamaya. We've had issues in the past with restaurants that open up not being especially neighborly. So, have you met the owners of those other restaurants yet?
I did.
Just to establish a good relationship, again, has nothing to do with your application, but it's, um, it's the good thing to do. And that's, that's all I have, until Casamaya wants to put up a Mexican statue.
They, they have two cactuses out there. They have two cactuses out there. They're gonna put up a matador.
And Mountain Hill's gonna put up, you know, Mount Vesuvius, or something like that, but, um, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
The, uh, I'll still give her the time, but on, on that kind of point, I think the intent of the original condition was not necessarily closing down the restaurant or hosting private parties, but I think it was more, we'd say, a theme night, right? Like, looking at the Christmas festivities and trying to promote the brand of joining people together on a celebration night or during Mardi Gras and theming it. And so, I think if we're looking at the opportunity to host themed days of a limit, so, the Kentucky Derby, or whatever else is going on, the world, you know, the Super Bowl party, or something else, I think that's where you're getting away from the restaurant with a complimentary bar, and being more of people coming there for that activity that day.
Do we impose that on any other restaurant establishment here in town?
No.
No, I don't think so.
To me, it's almost like the difference between a restaurant and a catering site.
And, and I heard very clearly the applicant testify that he does not want to be considered catering.
I mean, those, those conditions read to me as a bit of belts and suspenders on the intent of, as that application came forward, it was contemplated as a bar with a access, or a restaurant with an accessory bar, and that being the use, and it specifically says if it was any other machination, it may not have been considered for approval. So, I think he's keeping in that intent of that use, and operating within his controls is at his... he's keeping in that intent of that use, and operating within his controls is at his discretion as a business owner.
You've been open since December. Have you closed down the restaurant for any events?
Right. The, the market will dictate.
Teresa, we wanna come back to you?
I thought of this all on my own.
That's fantastic. I mean, you're.
I didn't.
No AI here.
No, I was gonna say.
AI won't replace you, but you will be replaced by AI if you don't start using it.
For an attorney, you're, that's the fastest I've ever seen an attorney do.
I'm in-house now, I don't bill hours.
It's a, it's a .6 minimum.
My partner, all right, I'm gonna, I have to digress. My partners used to, I used to bill this many, they used to bill at .25, for, you know, for like a simple email, so. Okay, anyway, louder live entertainment, including but not limited to DJs, bands, or group performances, shall be permitted to no more than 12 times per calendar year, and these events must be scheduled in advance and shall be conducted in a manner that minimizes disturbance to neighboring properties.
I think that's fair.
As long as that's not too, what was that?
Is that our code?
No, no, I just, I, I just made it up.
Because I think.
Again.
To Joe's, Joe's point for a second, I think there's that difference between closing a restaurant for a private party, that's, and then the other thing is this more extravagant evening affair, which is a bit, bit more of a, that'd be more of a to and fro, and people come backwards and forwards, as opposed to close a restaurant down and you saw everybody's there for the evening. So I, I would think that's, that's.
I'm still gonna take the hard line and say, do we impose this on any other eatery in town?
No.
Then we don't do it.
It's, it's just the location, it's only a bit sensitive for me.
I, my, my vote would also be to not impose this, I'm just using this if there's a way to bridge the gap, but I agree that, I actually just don't think it's gonna be that big of an issue. I've been to his restaurant, I understand what the vibe is, and it's not like a.
It's not a club.
It's not a club.
And my last.
It's a very high-end.
Yeah, and my last.
I'm not worried about it, I guess it's my point.
And my last point is, is if you'd had something like that, we'd probably be in the bar anyhow, but it's really, it's a small bar, so it's not as if it's gonna be.
So the mass will be 100 people in the bar.
Right, having a good time.
Yeah, I agree, so I think the consensus is, let's not even go there.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
Nice language, so.
Save that.
I said, thank you.
Save that for the next.
Save that, save that, zoning board might wanna reference that one.
I'm gonna retract my, I'm not splitting my feet. We're not using it, we're not using.
Again, thank you for coming before us, thank you for your investment in the community and in Myersville in particular. Now I would like to entertain a motion to accept this application with the conditions, stipulations.
And I'll understand it to be a motion to grant all the relief sought, the variances that we previously stated, with all the conditions stipulated to fire on behalf of the applicant that we've already stated.
And, and just a minor point, on the size of the statue, we could with codifying that.
It'll be clarified as we'll, I already forgot the other item, but it'll be clarified, I wrote it.
That's the private party.
I was just striking the language.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you wanted clarification on something else, though, earlier. Was it the upstairs room?
The separation of first floor, second floor?
No, you know what, whatever it is, if, if we haven't eliminated it, it will be clarified.
The comparison of the trees of the DEP and our.
Oh, yeah, there was a stipulation that they would offer a planting schedule to the Shade Tree Commission.
Oh, that I know.
I think you're good.
With the understanding that the DEP would most likely overrule or dictate what needs to be done. Got it.
Preemption.
Preemption, thank you.
Just like.
That's a big word, that's a, that's a five-dollar word.
We can't, we can't eliminate that from existence by putting it in the resolution.
Can we please come to a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Okay.
Committeeman Lavender?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Before I vote, I just wanna thank you for doing what you have been doing and re-energizing that part of town, so I greatly appreciate, yes, I approve you.
Mr. Laverario?
Yes.
Ms. Ojens?
Yes.
And Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the food there is excellent, and the horseradish is out of this world. It's out of this world.
Minor, minor point, happy hour would be a good introduction, by the way.
At a, at a bar menu, I wanna see a bar menu.
I'd like to make a motion to hold our next meeting after.
On nights when we hold committee and board meetings, extend his hours to midnight?
Wait, wait, just for clarification on the record, since we're still on the record, there'll be no attendance until at least 45 days after notice of adoption of the resolution.
Good point.
Yes, we've, I've already been there.
Buzz, like attorney buzzkill, I think.
So we have to stay out of there for 45 days?
Hell, not necessarily.
I'm gonna walk by and check the plumbing.
Just go and discuss. All right, thank you, guys. We've got, we've got a couple of quick items here, but I do wanna be sensitive. Does anybody need a break, or can we push through? Because I don't think this will be more than 15 minutes.
We're good.
Push through, is everything good? 15 minutes?
Thanks, guys. Thank you all.
Okay, so we will return to the agenda, and we're going to bypass the meeting minutes that our secretary is working on, thank you. And we'll go to the master plan consistency review. So does anybody have any comments on the two ordinances, ordinances, ordinance 565-25 and ordinance 566-25?
And Mr. Warner, I think you could clarify, we need a motion, second and roll call on both of these, correct?
Right, yeah, the way this works, as the board knows very quickly, is that any land development ordinance that is introduced by the governing body is referred to the planning board for master plan consistency review prior to a second reading and ultimate hearing and presumable adoption by the governing body. We have two such ordinances here, and one with respect to fence construction permits, one with respect to wall signs pertaining to residential home offices. The normal process is to hear from our board planner with respect to his opinion as to whether or not these, or I should say, whether these ordinances are not inconsistent, the double negative, it is a lower bar than being inconsistent. Substantial consistency works, close counts. Okay, close count.
I'm sure, and I'm sure it began.
The, so perhaps we should hear from Mr. Greigle on each of these ordinances, so that then you can decide whether you're gonna follow his recommendation and find them not inconsistent with the master plan, if that is his opinion.
Mr. Warner is correct, the municipal land use law is very specific that the planning board's duty is to review and report back as to whether or not it's inconsistent with the master plan and any other recommendations you may have. There is open-ended language as well. You know, in my opinion, with regard to the ordinances, given their very focused nature compared to a more broad master plan, I do not see any inconsistencies. If there's anything that individual board members think, you know, raises, you know, an issue that should be raised, then you can certainly do that, but as far as the overall intent of the MLEL requirements here, I think there's nothing inconsistent with regard to what's proposed.
And, and just to be clear, you may not be exactly aware, these ordinances originated with us.
That's, that's where I was gonna go.
The different form of us. So.
Correct.
Perhaps.
With the collective.
Even better.
But good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, just as the chairman has stated, both of these ordinances were reviewed by us, came through from the ORC, the Ordnance Review Committee. It has gone to first reading following our recommendation on the changes of any of the language. They have sent it back down to us, just as our attorney has stated. We've now seen that it is not inconsistent from our planner, so I think at this point we will have final say on this, to send back to the TC for second reading and public comment, and there is a possibility that it may come back to us for any refinements.
And I would recommend we take the extra 30 seconds or so to do each one separately, motion second and roll call vote, starting with 565-25, and if, if the chair's permission.
Please. So, motion please on that particular ordinance?
Can I ask a question? What precipitated changing the, the size of the signs permitted on a home office? What was, why did that change?
That came out of, well, if you wanna give the, a little bit of the history.
Yeah, so the backstory on that is, that came out of an application that came before the board where the sign was a two-by-two-foot square, or, or square-foot sign, so a pretty big sign, and that kinda, that big of a sign in, in a residential area, we were getting feedback from the residents that were opposed to that sign stating that this is just too big of a sign. It would, it would be, it would, it would. It would detract from the. Right, detract.
From the neighborhood.
Distracts character from the, from the residential neighborhood. So we said, okay, we're gonna go with a smaller sign, and this is what we settled on.
Yeah.
So it's not just one person that drove this whole bus?
No, 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 this, this came.
I drove the bus, but there were a lot of people on my bus.
A lot of people on the bus.
Fair enough.
Whole spreadsheet for the seating.
So are we talking about both ordinances or just the sign?
Right now, we're talking about. Just a, a motion on the first.
On the sign?
I thought you did do 565 first.
The first one is. First one was 565, that's why I asked.
Yeah, Pam asked about the sign.
25, yeah.
Right, but I, I had a question about 565, and this is where, it has a minimum height for a fence on a swimming pool of 54 inches, and the, the state minimum is 48. So where do we get 54? Do we know?
Not probably previous.
That's pre-existing.
So.
But we were talking about perimeter fences.
Right, you have to have a, a perimeter fence around a swimming pool.
I'm not talking about the swimming pool, we're talking about the property.
No, there's a.
Did we not change the swimming pool portion, I think? We did not.
We did not touch this.
We did not change, so, so. Okay, so that's, that's existing.
That's existing, yeah.
Because that's based on UCC code.
Yep, not.
The law, UCC code overrides anything land use when it comes to this fence around.
Right, but what I, when I did my research, the state rule says that the minimum height of fence is 48 inches, so who's, who's setting the, I, I don't understand how they're different.
I'm gonna say that was pre-existing. I don't know who wrote, whoever, whoever authored that ordinance prior to us amending the ordinance for the perimeter fence.
Increase it above UCC.
They increased it.
Right, what you're saying, right, it's.
That's, yeah, it's six inches above.
It's four and a half instead of four.
It's four and a half instead of four.
Our code's requiring.
Four, the code, the, the code is four, right?
We're requiring four and a half.
And we're requiring four and a half, so we're actually asking for more safety, the higher the fence around the swimming pool.
We didn't touch the fence around the pool.
We did not touch around, no, we only touched the perimeter.
It's not removed.
To make, to bring that in align with the construction code, right? Yes. Uniform construct, UCC?
UCC, uniform construction.
Thank you.
Is that something we want to entertain now at this juncture?
Do you wanna lower it?
Or to be in conformance with, UCC is 48?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I didn't look at UCC, I only looked at what New Jersey stipulates.
No, I understand.
New Jersey stipulates, stipulates 48 inches, and I was trying to understand that why we would establish something different than what the state establishes, because the state, typically that kinda stuff, I don't understand why we would go.
I mean, because technically we can suggest it, but I don't know that we can, Steve, you would, you mean.
Well, I don't, I'd have to see the state requirement in order to tell you whether, exactly what it says, and for certain whether would preempt municipal ordinances, if it is, if we are directly contradicting and it doesn't afford us the opportunity to be more strict, then we would be preempted. I think rather than.
And I didn't, I didn't look at any of that.
Yeah, rather than guess, particularly since this is an area which has not been amended, but pre-existed in the ordinance, and at least for the time being remains, my recommendation would be to do one of two things, either just find it not inconsistent if you agree with our planner's professional opinion, or in addition to that, maybe just ask the governing body to take note of that particular section, and, and if the governing body wishes to, and the township attorney, excuse me, yeah, the township attorney wishes to look into it, double-check and make sure, then you've done your job, if not more so, than your job by just alerting to that fact. Those would be my suggestions, one or the other.
But it's never been challenged.
And it made, you know.
And has it been challenged in the zoning board?
It might not be enforced, if it's preempted, who knows, yes.
Your construction code official is reviewing against UCC, not our code, only the zoning effort is going against.
So.
So my recommendation.
Either ignore it or say, hey, guys, if you want, take a look at it.
So my recommendation is to say that it is not inconsistent, and that highlight to the planning board, to the governing body, this variation that our, the fence around the pool exceeds that of what is required by the state.
Yeah, and leave it at that.
I think that puts us in a better position with greater safety, and, and, and Mr. L, if we wanna find out who and why that was originated, we're happy to go down and take a look at that. We'll invite you to the party.
Okay, so that sounds like a motion?
Yeah, motion to move ordinance 565-25 as stated.
Not inconsistent with the master plan.
Not inconsistent with the master plan, highlighting the difference, the variation of pool height fence in Long Hill, and that of the state requirement.
Second. Okay, Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Committeeman Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yeah.
Mr. Laverario?
Yes.
Ms. Ojens?
Yes.
And Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent.
Do you want the, the next one?
I'm sorry.
You wanna take the next one?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I can't make the motion.
No, 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 I just.
All right, so this is, so ordinance 566-25, this is the, addressing the sign of the wall sign, or, of a business in a residential area. We have reduced the sign from a two-foot by two-foot, or one by four, however you wanna configure that, four square feet, to a two-square-foot sign.
Is there a motion?
This is a motion to find that ordinance not inconsistent with the master plan and leave it at that.
Yes.
I have an issue with this.
You what?
I have an issue with this, I think, help me talk it for, forget, what you said in the size, I have no problem, that's what we discussed before.
Yeah.
But under B, right, have added or to permitted home office uses, right? These regulations shall not apply to flag United States of America or to permitted home uses. And this is quite extensive as to what is permitted here, right?
Which, how are we?
Right, it's struck out, and then it's been added with permitted home uses. So why, that seems excessive to me. Flags, emblems, or insignia of a nation, state, county, municipality, school business, or religious group, provided no more than one such flag, emblem, insignia shall be permitted for each entity, so you can have one for each of the military branches, that's why I take it, and to note such individuals display, see 24 square feet in area, no more than three flags shall be permitted on the property. These regulations shall not apply to flags United States of America or to permitted home office uses, so.
The difference is just the or to permitted uses that.
Yes, which makes no sense to me. Help me understand, I have no idea this piece. We, we, we looked at the.
We talked about it at.
I'm trying to remember, this, this particular piece, though, I just don't remember this one segment.
I'm trying to even think of what the implication is in actual real time, like what it.
These regulations shall not apply to flag United States of America, which is pretty serious, or to home office uses. Why, why we, I don't know why.
The best would be just to remove that or statement.
Just remove that strikeout completely, B, leave as is.
Remove the or statement.
No, just leave it.
It's right back to where it is.
Stay, just don't do it.
If you remove the or statement, there's no need to.
I just wonder if it got caught up because of fact it talked about sign, I don't, I don't know, I just, I just apologize, I didn't realize that until just now. Does that make sense to anybody else?
Yeah, so the reason that the.
Strike that, you're back to here anyway.
It appears that the reason that.
It appears that the reason that it says shall not apply to the flag of the United States of America.
I'm just saying, just for...
Guys, 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 let's get the floor.
Just the last sentence. The regulation shall not apply to the flags of the United States of America. I believe that original purpose before revised was so that a flag of two nations, our nation and a other nation, could be flown at the same time, right? Because without adding that of not applying to our nation, then you would be restricted to flying our flag or another nation's flag, not two on your property. But then, or permitted home uses, I don't see where you would have flags for permitted home.
And more than one, that should be struck. I just don't feel that we should undo B.
Think you just leave B as it was.
Unless anybody just, that's what I was reading. I just want to make sure. I apologize for that.
Unless that was a committee revision, that was intended.
So was it, when the sport came up with that ordinance, change, your intention was only to change G and not B?
That's what I thought. I thought that was...
Somehow B got changed?
Yeah. There was conversation about flags, and we were talking about it, talking about it, and then I don't recall how, it was so long ago that we talked about it.
Yeah, it just shocked me now.
Leave B. So if I understand the motion that's about to be made, it's a motion to find 566-25 not inconsistent with the master plan, but also to, in the other matters language, avail yourself of the opportunity to recommend that the last phrase in B or to be permitted home use, or to permitted home office uses be stricken so that B would be returned to its original correct language.
Is that very comfortable? I just want to make...
Are we good with that?
And someone could just say, that's the motion.
So moved. Okay, we have Scott seconding. Teresa, motion?
Okay. Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Committeeman Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Laverario?
Yes.
Ms. Ojens?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Just for clarification, if I made that, because I do it differently, here, we don't do a resolution. We, there's a notification letter, but now you have some particulars here.
Correct.
So maybe the answer is, send it to me. Well, exactly. Thank you. Both letters. Thanks.
Okay, on to old new business. This should be five minutes or less.
I have one thing from the ORC. This is regarding H PAC not being a commission but an advisory committee in land use 171, establishment and composition, section D. It is written Historic Preservation Commission, and it should state Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. So the recommendation is to change the two instances where it says HPC for acronym to HPAC.
Okay.
No issues with that?
No issues.
Okay.
So we're going to write that up?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll write that up and...
Yep, Steph's already got it, so we'll take care of that.
Well, you got ORC. Any other updates there?
I sent to Liz, or no, I'm sorry, I sent around to ORC the comments that we all discussed about the apartments on the ground floor into Tom's template. We've been all really busy, so I haven't heard back from anybody. In efficiency sake, I don't know if we want to just bring it to the next meeting. There's, I don't know that there's a ton more to discuss, but I made this template a little bit comprehensive.
No, that's great.
To make sure that it's documented.
So the homework we have is to bring our comments, or you want them in advance of the next meeting?
If people have additional comments, send them to me.
Send comments, so that way we can talk about it at the ORC off-cycle of the planning board meetings, and then we can incorporate them.
And then separate from that, I sent to Liz the much more just like procedural, like the just ordinance name changes and whatnot.
His own name changes, right?
I haven't heard back from her, but per your instruction, like, let's just get that to her at least for drafting, and then we'll see what's...
Can I just add? I recommend that we hold for now the draft of the LU 124.1 for the following reasons. I feel we should wait until after the housing element of 2018 is completed. That we also wait until the fair share housing plan of 2018 is updated. I don't feel that it supports master plan specifically for Myersville.
You referring to the apartment?
Correct.
Okay. Well, why don't we...
I know that we will be discussing, but my recommendation is that we put it on hold for now before we invest a lot of time and effort into it.
I think that should be something we address and discuss and look at the pros and cons of that.
I know people have put a lot of work into it, but it is inconsistent with master plan.
Good. So that's a good segue, Pam, because the housing element draft has just arrived thanks to our board planner.
Because of our copy, I will email it to everybody.
Yes. Well, yeah, I think we can email it out, but I do have a subcommittee. Scott, Pam, and Tony are going to assist, and I'd like to just do a Zoom call maybe in a week that we could discuss it amongst a smaller group in regards to any comments on the housing element, and then facilitate a discussion if time permits in the next meeting as well.
Also, I believe Jessica should be almost done with her portion, too.
Oh. For the fair share.
Okay.
So just so you know, yes, so Jessica's working on the fair share plan, and the draft of the housing element was shared by Ms. Lahany with regards to that. So I think we're in good shape there. But again, time permitting, I don't see any reason that the whole board can't have a copy of the draft. It's just, we'll have a subcommittee to help facilitate. Thanks to you guys paving the way, it's a very efficient way to kind of get issues out in regards to the general discussion.
If I may ask one question regarding the fair share plan aspect of the housing element fair share plan. Since the fair share plan for the fourth round is part of a pending litigation, and that's a declaratory judgment action, I believe, that was filed by the township, even if the township accepted the number. I'm not privy, I'm not a affordable housing council. But the, at least in some municipalities, perhaps most, the drafts are, there's a deadline, as everyone knows, of June 30th for adopting the housing element fair share plan, as well as having at least draft implementation ordinances at the ready for the governing body to adopt, even though the AOC directive seems to indicate they should actually be adopted by June 30. And I believe that's incorrect. It's inconsistent with statute. But at least many municipalities have handled drafts as in the context of executive session until a certain point when they're ready or close to ready for adoption. I just throw that out there, just as information.
You draft, so the board talks about it in executive session versus in the...
Until a certain point in time, since it is...
Until the public hears.
Until the judgment is settled.
Well...
Effectively.
Well, no, it'll be adopted publicly. Has to be, of course.
Correct.
But I'm just saying, in the formulation stages, I don't know, and that's really more something for the, I guess, the governing body and township attorney to maybe share their view with the board, and the board can make a determination as to how best to handle it with that input, as well as guidance of the board's attorney.
I'm very confident our professionals will figure out this labyrinth as we get through this process, so. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No. No. I have one other new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I know that you're working on zoning maps with Joe, and Joe, I just want to say thank you for the flood map presentation yesterday, as well as the vision for Central Park. But I have 39 line items here about rezoning things that need to be addressed that were in the master plan. So I'd like to work with Joe, we saw work with Randy, to make sure we get that provision correctly.
You need some additional assistance in a smaller...
Yeah, I'd like to have Mitch join me as well to kind of work through these.
Will, Will.
Will, sorry, yeah, Will.
Okay.
So that way we can address these 39 items as we start laying out the map of Long Hill.
Good.
That's all I got.
Good.
One quick old business, if I can. I mentioned it earlier to Joe about the state plan and the conversation that Bob and I had with the county representative.
Yes.
And they asked for us to go back to him, or he asked us to go back to him about sort of formulating that, getting the townships together again, something he had done, he said a few years back, but that's sort of fallen by the wayside, so he'd like to re-energize that.
Yes.
And I think in our meeting, or discussion on state plan, we pointed the finger to you, Joe, to help get that conversation going, or at least an email sent to that gentleman. So is that...
Well, it reminds me to thank you and Bob for going before the township committee to present a cross-acceptance summary. I thought that was very well good.
Thank you. So Joe, you're good with that? Do we need to...
Yeah, so I will coordinate with the county about their prior efforts, and then bring that to our administrator for an opportunity to join any new efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well done, everybody.
Thank you.
Well done.